You. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. It is 6:01 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council Regular Meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers located at 100 Polk Avenue here in the beautiful city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. We are for a regular city council meeting. Today is June 18th, 2024, and I call this meeting to order. Councilmember Davis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here today. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
All here, council. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you all for being here and city administration. Appreciate you. At this time, it is the approval of the agenda as written or with amendments, council. Any changes to the order or any other amendments needed for the agenda? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. At this time, we're at the public participation portion of the meeting. I've got a couple of cards for those of you who took time out of your day to join us here, and for those of you who are listening online and participating, we ask that you please raise your hand if you would like to speak. After the folks here have a chance to speak, we'll make sure that you're heard, we'll unmute you, and then we'll close the public participation portion of the meeting. If it is your first time, we have a light system. Once the light goes green, you have three minutes, and at yellow, when it goes yellow, right here in front of me, you have 30 seconds. We do ask that you please wrap it up once it goes red at the end of three minutes. And with that, first card I have here is Mr. Bob Levine. Mr. Levine, if you don't mind your name and address, please.
Yes, Bob Levine, 111 Lincoln Avenue in Cape Canaveral. Thank you for the time to come up here and speak. My real complaint, Airbnb's. Got one next door to me. We've been there living 13 years. These folks moved in, I should say, bought the property, made it into one. I've done a good job with it, but we're having tremendous difficulty from, well, 50/50% of the time of disruption coming from next door. I was in the other side of the world over the weekend and got a call from my wife at 2:30 in the morning, your time here, about the 12 naked women in the yard having a drunken fest out there, just tearing it up, all kinds of noise, disruption in their jacuzzi, and didn't really give a darn about who else might be around them. And my wife had motioned to them that it's past the ordinance time for a curfew, and they just told her to go back inside. And I'm not going to stand for this and tolerate it because that means I'm going to have to square off with the neighbor, and I shouldn't have to. So what ordinances do we have around here at night to keep this from happening, and what kind of enforcement is there going to be? Because I would have called the police, but I have to share some construction work with this neighbor next door. So, once I get that construction work done, we're getting our roof redone, it's going to be a different scene. I'd like to know what you're doing here because it seems that the city here is supporting the Airbnb's and the residents, but we're just chopped liver. And I'd like to know what's going on. I know that revenue, you know, the Airbnb's bring in revenue, but a lot of us have been here for a number of years, and it seems that we just don't get any respect out of it. So, that's my major thing I want to talk to you about, about the curfew, the laws. When at night does this have to stop? You know, they're required to be quiet, to turn it off. And common walls, I really think that you need to review when somebody's buying a piece of property here to do an Airbnb, that there should not be a home sharing a common wall to begin with, because that's just not fair. And, I mean, we have problems with them, and his family's attitude as well, you know, we have, making money here, and this is our business. I know, and I live here, and we live there 24/7, and my wife is home a while. She, you know, she's home all the time, and she's got health issues and all, and it's a tremendous position. And I guess we're just going to have to call the police and be a real pain in the behind. So what are you going to do as city council members? Because I know you are elected, and I'm sure you like being in this position, but, you know, if I don't get the support, and a lot of us don't get the support we have as residents here, we're going to have to think about the next elections and maybe replace the members here, people who may care for the residents here, and stop putting all the attention going for the Airbnb's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. I've got your questions, and I do intend to follow up with our city manager, and hopefully you as well. Thank you. Next card is Mr. John Benton.
I'm here for my code reduction hearing, and I'd like to read an email that I got from David Dickey, and it concerns Kevin Mann, Spaceman Storage. And this is from you guys. The city sent me this, and I just showed it to the commander, and it says, "Mr. Green, please see the email chain below. Due to the discussion at Tuesday night's council meeting regarding Spaceman Storage, city code enforcement staff contacted Kevin Mann, owner of the property. It was indicated that Christopher Mann's son, owner, the son of the owner, is providing nighttime security at that property. Staff was told that no one was living at the property. Sheriff's Department personnel has confirmed that there is no evidence of anyone living at that property based on routine nightly patrols. Code enforcement staff reiterated to the property owner that the property cannot be used for residential purposes. In addition, staff recommended that Christopher register his actual address with the sheriff's office. Sheriff's Department personnel, along with code enforcement staff, will continue to monitor the situation. Please let me know if you have any questions." Then it goes down, "Brian, I told, I spoke, Brian spoke with Agent Mulligan with the sheriff's department. He believes Christopher is living in Port St. John with his wife. I forwarded you the email to Agent Mulligan to further investigate. Thanks, Paul." And then it goes, "Sir, I contacted Kevin Mann in reference to his son, Christopher Mann, living at 85, 8850 Brown Circle. He informed me that he was working night security at Kevin Mann's property located at 8850 Brown Circle. He also informed me that a security, as a security office, there is a security office at that location that he was utilizing. I informed him he could not live there, however, he could work there as night security. I also informed him he needed to register his actual address with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement because he was showing 8550 Brown Court, Cape Canaveral, and he said he would. His son is a sex offender, and he was up there for security when I was being accused of living in the warehouse. Must have been Kevin Mann's son calling you guys screaming that I lived in that warehouse. And I told you guys at the very beginning, I had a police officer in my unit next to me, Coco Beach, his name is easy. And at the very first council meeting I came to, Mayor Randalls said that he knows I didn't live in that warehouse.
Thank you, John. We're going to end it there. Thank you. Next card I have is Ms. Peg Schaller. Now, I'm sorry, Peg, I do notice that you selected 10, but if you choose to speak now, that's fine, too. We'll have.
You know what? If it's okay, I'll wait until the end, or maybe I can have an opportunity to speak twice if only a minute and a half this time. When we're going through item 10, which is the recommendations after Todd and I worked through all of the issues, I'm just asking that the city council keep these main ideas in their mind when we're looking for a proper resolution, and I'm taking this right off of the city of Cape Canaveral's organizational values. And when we make recommendations, I'm hoping that we're aligning the recommendation with what these values state. One is commitment to excellence. We believe our role is to make Cape Canaveral the ideal community for our residents, businesses, and visitors. I hope that that's the goal still. Accountability. We have a responsibility to one another. These are not in order, these are the ones that are most important for this particular situation. That we have a responsibility to one another, the public, to perform our jobs effectively and efficiently, and we take that responsibility seriously. Integrity. We strive to make decisions, take actions based on what is right rather than what is expedient. We are honest, and we own up to our mistakes. In communication, we communicate openly, clearly, and directly in a timely manner with one another and with the community. So when we get the recommendations, I hope we're aligning those with what our core values state as a city. Also, just briefly, want to state the role that code enforcement has as far as property maintenance is concerned, and this is out of our code, section 34-94, purpose. The intent of the city council in adopting this article is to establish reasonable and uniform regulations on appearance for public areas, business establishments, residential communities within the city. Mainly, the big reason for this is good community appearance is the product of orderly and harmonious relationships between existing man-made objects in nature. Appearance has a direct bearing on the economic value of property. When appearance of public areas, business establishments, and residential communities is good, businesspeople, homeowners, and industrial developers tend to have a strong confidence in the community. Poor appearance, conjection, and lack of maintenance bring about blight, decay, and decreased property values. So these are the, when we talk about the issues with code enforcement, they don't affect Peg Schaller, Ellie Mae's Tiki Bar, they affect every resident because good enforcement brings value, and poor enforcement brings blight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Emeritus, Rocky, I noticed that you selected item number nine. Did you want to speak now, or wait, or both?
I'll wait, too, if I have words.
Okay, you got it. Yes, sir.
Go number nine.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Levine, I should have clarified, you did select item number two as well. Do you intend to speak on item number two? I don't know if that was agenda item number two, which is to approve the minutes. That box is selected?
Oh.
That's okay. The consent agenda items get voted through, so I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to speak on that if that was your intent. I'll just make a note. Thank you. You just had two there, and I just marked it. Think we're good.
Yeah, I think I got you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. If anyone intended to speak, other than those who are waiting on the agenda items, please raise your hand or come forward. For those of you listening at home, we ask that you please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. We can unmute you. I'm looking now, see if any hands are raised. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you again for your time to come speak today. And with that, we are moving on to the consent agenda. We have four items tonight, council. Are there any items that we would like to remove from the consent agenda? None, looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis to approve the consent agendas, items one, two, three, and four. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. Just want to comment, I'm excited about item number four, the sandbagging machine, and I want to recognize that, and thank staff and all that who are involved before hurricane season. I think that that's excellent. Thank you.
We think we can have it within the month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, items for action. We have three items, numbers five, six, and seven. The first one, number five, is to approve, quote from Razorback LLC, in the amount of $148,000 for the effluent transfer pump station, structural rehabilitation, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor, back in August of last year, city council approved a proposal from Tetra Tech to perform the design and the construction services for repairs to this platform at the water reclamation facility. This is an elevated walkway that employees have to access at the plant, at the main building, at the east side of the plant. And council approved that, $50,635. That resulted in the creation of the design for the repair for the spalling concrete on this platform. After we received the design, we put it out to bid. We did receive three bids, and the lowest bid was $148,000, and Tetra Tech recommended we go with that one, with Razorback LLC. And, Tim, how quickly could that work get started, and how long do we think it would take? Okay, thank you. I know you weren't prepared for that. I'm curious. Thank you. But, Mayor, that's the item, to repair the structural issue in the catwalk, and it's a good thing that we have a healthy enterprise fund for this. That's why we want to have a healthy enterprise fund, that we can take care of this most important asset, this plant out here, and make sure it's going to work well for everyone.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none. And just double-check the cards, make sure nobody had agenda item number five checked. I tend to miss that from time to time. Okay, seeing none.
I think Mr. Russell said earlier he wanted to have a comment on this one. Is that correct?
Mr. Russell, you did. Look at there. See? I wouldn't have known. Please come forward if you'd like. Thank you very much, City Manager. I left it up there when you brought it. That was not intentional.
Thank you, and I might not be right on point here. When I looked at the agenda, I saw a pump station, and I didn't realize it was structural only. But I do have a question about pump stations in general. When the storm rages, and the water's falling, and the water's building up, and then floods are about to happen, if the power goes off, do the pump stations have lift stations? Lift stations have backup power?
June, would you come up and address that, or Tim?
I'm concerned about it because our neighborhood flooded out once, and we had about nearly less than a dozen houses that were flooded. And one of the reasons was the lift station failed during that episode, and I'm just keeping an eye on it.
Lamar, are you referring to sanitary sewer or stormwater?
Stormwater.
Okay.
Wrong one, huh?
Also known as June or Tim.
Okay. The only stormwater pump that we do have is being installed as we speak. It will have a backup generator, so when the water does get high and the power does go off, it will continue to work.
Okay, next question. Where is it? Is it in Harbor Heights?
No, it is not in Harbor Heights. It is in the Center Street Basin, which is on Center Street.
Right. Okay. Then the lift station that failed during the last several years ago, when we had the bad storm that stayed over top of us, and we got a lot of water in the neighborhood and in the houses. One of the culprits was the lift station over on Coral.
Okay.
Failed.
Right. Now, that's for sewer. So there's actually stormwater in there sewer.
Wait a minute. I was told that the lift station for stormwater had failed. Is there a lift station for stormwater on Coral?
No, there is not.
You don't have a lift station?
No, sir.
Wonderful. Nevertheless, our neighborhood has flooded badly one time, and I've told other councils, and I'll tell this one, we have a plan. If our neighborhood floods again, we will go down to the dune, and we'll cut it with shovels, and we will drain our neighborhood. Now, there are legal complications, I understand, but I don't believe anybody will attack us from the legislature, nor the county, or possibly even the city, for doing what's necessary in an emergency to save our homes. And I'd like to think that there's backup power, or there's lift stations or something that's looking out for that low spot in the middle of our neighborhood down up between Coral and Harbor. So anyway, that's my say. We will cut that dune if we have to.
Can I ask you what? You said you all have flooded one time. Do you know what year that was by any chance?
Tropical Storm Fay.
That's what I was, okay.
Tropical Storm Fay, and it stayed over us for several days and rained hard.
Okay.
And flooded.
Yeah.
Plus, we had a water main break, which didn't help any either.
No.
And we had, there was one other cause, but the main thing was the lift station failed. Or I was told that the outfall, the drainage water, there's a, let me put it this way. Would you please go check to see if you have a lift station that you're not aware of? Because I've been told by more than one city employee, there's one over there. So just understand how that happens.
Well, that pump station is stormwater, lift station is sewer. So when somebody says lift station, it normally refers to sewer. If they say pump station, that refers to stormwater.
Well, that's all anybody's ever called it in our neighborhood, or when I've talked to them, it was a lift station. Okay, pump station. Let's talk about what it is. Is there a pump station on Coral?
There is not. There's only a lift station for sewer.
There should be a pump station over there. There's a bad flooding area there, and I just assumed that it was being looked at and monitored, and it's not. Well, well, that's what I get for not following up. What I'd like to ask is the city follow up and look for the need for a pump station on that main drain, I don't know where to call it, but it's up there by just northeast, west of my home, 376. There's a big drain up there. Goes across the street, another drain. Then it goes under the ground to the middle of the neighborhood, through the middle of the neighborhood. It's only that big, not enough. And then it goes over to another drainage collection point. I assume from there it drains, or is pumped, or is helped onward. It's a severe weak point in flood control in our town. I thought it was being looked at. It's not. Let's look at it. I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Pump station request down, I know exactly west of your home where you're talking about, and I remember talking to you about this years back. Thank you, Tim. Thank you. So the item in front of us, there's no other cards regarding that item. Item number five, proven this amount. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking for a motion to allow.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Razorback LLC of the amount of $148,000. I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, got a second by Councilmember Jackson. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Item number five passes 5-0. Moving to the next item for action, which is Resolution Number 2024-02, amending the defined contribution retirement plan for the general employees of the city of Cape Canaveral. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to ask Natalie to come forward in case there's any questions. This has been in front of the council a few times now. Last time, it was in front of the council, there was discussion about moving the vesting period to immediately after employee finishes his or her six-month probationary period, as recommended by our consultant. And city council was in favor of adding that to this amended resolution, but also wanted to know what the costs were to do that, to move that forward. So Natalie's prepared this response, and Natalie, we'll talk about the cost for moving it, the vesting period, and then also, we're going to talk about combining those costs with, if we do make a change to 10 and 3%, or some other number.
Thank you.
Natalie?
Could you raise the screen? Is that good? That's good, thanks. Okay, we did go to Jeremy Button over at the FMIT, and he came back to us with some numbers. If we were to change that to the six months with those additional five staff members, I'm sorry. It would amount to the $12,478 to add those five staff members to the original amount of the $90,000. Where's the number? Or the 90, is it the 92? Yeah. Sorry, I can't barely see that. Okay, for the 9% plan and the 4% match, it was the 90,000, the budgetary impact of the 90,000. Sorry, I can't even see my numbers. Okay, thank you. Yeah, adding that with the budgetary impact of the 90,605, the second considered an increase of the 10% for the 401, and the status quo of the 3% with the corresponding budgetary impact of the 92,000. Adding that in, it was an additional $12,478,000 to add those five employees on. So for the 9-4 plan, to add those employees, it came out to an additional 15,000, and he said for the 10-3, it would be a status quo on that. It would just be less money from the employees. And we did provide, combined with the previously proposed annual budget of the 90,000, it takes it to 93,000 for the one-year, plus impacts for future wage increases.
And so that's an impact, Mayor, above the current retirement plan costs, which are in attachment four and five, of $302,795.88. So it's not quite a third, something less than a third of an increase for this program if we wanted to move forward with the recommendations.
I want to make sure that summary increase, what attachment was that? We have eight attachments. It was?
Yeah, the first three were the original resolutions.
Mm-hmm.
And the resolution that Melinda had originally provided.
And four and five are the comparison of the 7-3 existing, move into a 9-4, and then attachment five is?
10-3.
The existing in 10-3.
It was currently a 7-3. Both of these would be increases.
Right. And currently, the 7-3, down at the bottom there on the screen we're showing, on the left, it shows $216,000. That's our annual?
That was the original one that was provided back in the March meeting.
That's what we pay, as you said, status quo today? That's?
That was the number as of March.
With the 7%.
With the 7%. Correct.
So the left-hand column is a 7%, 216,000. Right-hand column is a 3% match, 80. Right-hand column is a 3% match, 85,900, for a total of 302, which is at the top there.
Got it. And then the 90, the one to the right showing the 395,000 at the top, that's the delta, the difference?
Yes.
All the way to the far right. Thank you, that makes perfect sense. And-
Attachment 4 is just like this one, just with the other scenario.
And then we came back with the difference to take it to the six months and adding in those five employees. What the cost differential would be.
Thank you. So I spoke with the city manager yesterday, and it was the April 4th meeting that we held. I think this was brought forward after we had requested a comparison or at least verifying the other cities. I think this is not an attachment here today, but it was provided at that meeting. And I think 11 responses were provided. Satellite Beach, Port Orange, Felsmere, Winter Park, Daytona Beach, Pontonlet, Estatua, Rockledge, Daytona Beach Shore, Zacoee, Village of Takista. And then the ones with the plan type, there were four out of those that have a plan type of direct contribution, just like the City of Cape Canaveral. And only one of those four had the planned sponsor of FMIT, just like City of Cape Canaveral, and that's Satellite Beach, with a very similar population of 11,295. Double the full-time employees roughly with 104. Their vesting period is five years. They have a 5% for the 401A and a 5% match, so higher than our match, lower than our, I guess, non-elected contribution. But the reason I wanted to bring this up was that the other vesting periods for those four was, so it was five years, six years. There's zero years for Felsmere. Very small community, which I guess that means they're immediately vested?
Correct.
And then 100% upon higher vested? Is that how it works?
Yeah, they don't have a vesting period. They allow them to go straight in and be vested right away.
And then the other one was five. And when I heard, I think we're one year today, 100% vested?
No, it's a five-year.
Twenty-five.
It's a tiered vesting period.
The resolution, I think. But we are-
It's like at two years or 25%, and then it tiers up after that over the five-year period.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, Exhibit 1? Or Attachment 1? Inside?
It's on the original.
Yeah, page 5.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Page 5.
Is that what we're looking for, Natalie?
I think it's a different page than on the screen. Resolution 127?
Twenty-five and then 50, 75. Our current one is at two years, it's 25, and then it goes to 50, and then 75, and then 100.
Year, so year 1, 0. It's not until year 2 they get 25%. Year 3, they go to 50%. And then year 4, they go to 75. And then year 5, they're fully vested at 100?
Correct.
Okay, so that's current at that 3, or 7%, 3. And so comparing a public entity like us to other public entities makes sense. But even with the private sector, you know, which sometimes try to be competitive with, that to me seems a, I think, one year today with the step up makes sense. And I think there's a lot of risk in investing them that early in their process or their journey, I guess, with the city, their career here. I think that the trade of time to become fully vested with taxpayer contributions to retire is an important one. We do want employees for a long time, and I certainly don't study this and I'm not in it. But when I look at other cities, I think out of the 11 responses, we only got to see, well, which made sense, the four. I don't know if, what the other city's vesting period is. And certainly Felsmere, 0, is very aggressive. But 5, 6, 5, 3 out of the four, five years for Satellite, six years for Port Orange, and five years for Winter Park. I would not, I guess I'm struggling to want to move that forward six months when we're already, I think, very aggressive at one year.
Well, we already, we only had three days to get responses.
Okay.
So that's just the respondents we had over a three-day period, so. I mean, we could reach out to Jeremy. He has said, I mean, they have like a four-page list of people that we could technically maybe ask for responses. But in the one article I had provided, it did say 49% of defined contribution plan participants had immediate vesting.
Forty-nine percent.
Yeah, it did say that from the Vanguard study.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I didn't say public or private sector, it just said in overall.
Okay. And it would be, I guess it's hard to know. You know, some folks, to be 100% vested, it takes five years.
Correct.
But in year 2, they're 25% vested. So if they were to retire at that point, whatever, they would have, they would take 25%.
Right. But when you, when you go on to, when the FMIT, they do publish a report every year, so you can see how many are actually in the defined contribution plan. So, I mean, there's 100, like 100 other cities, municipalities, that have defined contribution. So we could pull that information. We just wouldn't know how, what their vesting periods are without getting, I mean, like I said, we only had the three days to get responses.
I appreciate that. I think, yeah, the three days, I never intended, I think, for it to come back that fast. I think there was a meeting after. And it actually caught me off guard that it was on the meeting, which is fine. And then it was again, but it, more time. It was to me about getting to the budget before we approve an operating expense that's going to affect us really for decades, that, you know, we didn't want to approve this without seeing the whole picture.
I think we, you know, this wouldn't even take effect until October anyways, so there's certainly time on this. We can go back out and get some more of that data for those other cities, just to have that to compare to.
Yeah.
I want to be competitive.
I think it was more about allowing the entry over the-
Right. And I think, you know, one thing to remember, and all really good points made by Counsel, City Manager, of course. The, of course, bringing it to six months, it's that attractiveness of, as we're trying to get new employees and get quality employees, you know, they'll look at us because they'll say, wow, six months, you know, I'll be, you know, vested, start the vesting period. But also the retention of people wanting to stay, knowing that they're on board and, you know, they're being vested in six months. And I like, I like the six months because, I mean, we like, and the mayor's concerned about that, I could tell, is these people, we want them to get through probation, at least six months, because we want to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. So taking it from a year down to six months, we still get to see the quality of that employee and the contributions they can make. And then it makes it more attractive for them, and we attract better employees. That's the whole, the whole scheme. I would say too, like, a place like Felsmere, which is very small, probably, you know, they start at zero, you know, there's no requirement, because it's probably very hard to find employees for that particular neck of the woods, so to speak, you know? Because you also got to look at where these cities are and how attractive it is to be there and be an employee in that city. That's very important. I'd much rather work in Cape Canaveral than Felsmere.
Thank you. That was all I had, Counsel, just, I think, I want to be as competitive as we can be. And the way I would make that decision is just getting, I think, expanding into that. And even when I see five, it may, you know, it might be more similar to what we have today, even more aggressive than five. So I'm not saying, you know, that's, I think, if it, whatever's reasonably accessible.
And I think it's been a good exercise to ask these questions over the months, because Counsel has a good kind of idea of what the budgetary impact might be as we're going into these budget months, as we're making these decisions on the budget. But I think we can certainly use this next month period to get that better data, get more data on what other cities are doing, just to help quantify that decision for the vesting period.
And I think it was also to change when they can start participating, taking it from the one year to the six months was more appealing as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, Mayor, if there's consensus to take no action on this, other than-
I'm the only one that spoke. I think I'd like to hear. Thank you, though.
I would just like to, when I talked to City Manager about this, he was telling me that there are some cities that have, are in the Florida retirement system. And then, you know, we were discussing it, what the cost of that would be compared to what we have now. And are we too small of a city to, is there a way we could get more information on that and how that would affect our budget as well?
FRS?
You know, I've actually looked into that in the time that I've been here. That's a whole, it's a whole other ballgame. It's a very deep, probably more intense discussion. The process of converting from like where we're at to where we would want to go with the Florida retirement system. I could get information on that, but that, that's not going to be any type of quick turnaround where I'm going to present an agenda item to Counsel in two months and Counsel is going to say, let's flip it all over, because it probably ain't going to happen, because it's going to be a lot to digest. And you bring up a good point, with us as small as we are, yeah, there's a, I actually was talking to Zach with our auditors about this, probably a year, year and a half ago. And I think our size has a big, you know, will have a big impact on that, and also the cost to the city, too. So there's a lot, I could get a lot of information for you in the next few months or whatever, but I could tell you that's not something that Counsel is going to say, well, yeah, let's flip one October, because there's a lot to consider there. But I, if you want me to, I could get information on that.
I just think basic information would be good to have.
Yeah, yeah. I could do that, yeah.
Down the road for, you know, the future, maybe it's something we would think about.
Yeah. But I think you hit the nail on the head, too, about the size of the city. I think that's a major factor, so.
But we could get, in the next month or so, get a little bit more information about that, along with the other information.
Let me, let me get highlights and at least could present, you know, bullets to you to get the ball rolling, so you, you can say, wow, that's, you know, I didn't realize that and whatever, but, yeah. But we could start the process. Okay.
Councilmember Willis?
Oh, yeah. I have no objection to gathering some more information and getting some more data on other cities. But in my experience with owning businesses, hiring employees and taking care of them with retirement plans and everything, the six-month vesting would be very attractive to the younger professionals that I've dealt with. I did one-year vesting, but young people tend to switch jobs if they don't feel like they're being able to put skin in the game. And I think getting to a six-month period, they're going to participate and they're going to be a little more active with it, and will put down roots here. So I would be all in favor of reducing the vesting period, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. That's great. And I do agree on the FRS. I mean, really, employee-led, I mean, if it's not something, but if it's a big undertaking, just knowing what that looks like, because I had to choose to talk about that as well yesterday with you. I think Cocoa Beach is on FRS, Natalie?
They have, they have their own pension plans.
Okay.
They have three pension plans.
I think Cocoa, I believe Cocoa's under FRS. I believe.
Which is a much bigger-
Yeah, and they're big, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll record consensus that we're going to go out to more cities in our survey. John, you're going to get some more, understand what the process is and data and cost to go to FRS.
And what kind of effect that would have on a city our size. Yeah, I'll do that.
We'll take no action on this tonight, but we'll come back with that additional information.
Thank you. Anything else, Counsel? Seeing none? Okay. And no one from the public? I did not see, needed to speak on this one? If so, please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no hands raised, we can go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Thank you all, John, Natalie. Appreciate your help. Item number six, item for action, I'm sorry, item number seven. We just finished item number six. Number seven is to designate one city official to be the voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities 2024 Annual Conference, scheduled for August 15th through the 17th, 2024, in Hollywood, Florida. City Manager?
Yes, this is something we do each year. Last year, I believe it was Counselmember Davis. Councilman Raymond, I'm sorry, okay. So it's just, Mayor, I think it's just a matter of seeing if anybody's willing to serve or wants to be nominated to serve, and we could just do a simple vote to see if that person's approved to serve in that role.
Thank you very much. Is anyone interested?
I would like to nominate Kim Davis, and she's our Space Coast League of Cities rep.
I'd second that.
And you're willing? Thank you very much. Anyone else interested or opposed to that? Nomination by Counselmember Willis?
I'll second it.
Okay. As a motion, I, take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion by Counselmember Willis, a second by Counselmember Jackson, to nominate Counselmember Davis, who is willing to be the voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, any comments on this, or?
No, I agree. I think Kim would do a great job.
Any further discussion? Thank you very much, Counselmember Davis. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. That concludes Items for Action, which now moves us to the discussion portion of the meeting. It is 6:50, and we are one minute ahead of schedule. So I pause. Item number eight is building code and flooding, submitted by Counselmember Jackson. Counselmember Jackson, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a discussion item that has come to mind based on a lot of the reports and studies that I've been reading as I've been getting up to speed on the Center Street Basin and the actions that we have to help alleviate the flooding. And with the tidal valve, as everyone knows, I've been really excited for that process to move forward. However, as I've gone through this, the consistent theme that I've seen in the Kimley Horn, as well as the Mead Hunt reports, is the amount of concrete in those areas. So I started wondering, as far as our building code, have we looked at that to ensure that we're not just barreling forward, doing things the exact same way that we may have in the past, and creating situations where we could be enhancing flooding instead of alleviating it? So in the Kimley Horn report on one-way streets in the Presidential Basin, which floods, on page nine, it said, "A majority of the city's stormwater infrastructure was designed and implemented in the '50s through the '80s, when water levels were lower and development was less intense. The Presidential Street's neighborhood has a high impervious surface area, ranging from 60% to 80% impervious coverage in many areas." 60% to 80% impervious coverage in many areas." And so, if you wouldn't mind, clerk, going to the map, you'll see that we've got 60% to 80% impervious coverage in many areas near those Presidential Streets. So, and you're looking at figure four, that was included in the report, and it says, "The majority of the neighborhood is comprised of less, less than 50% impervious area." The vulnerability assessment identified the need to expand the ability for surface infiltration capacity, and to decrease impervious surface area with the continued impacts that we are having with the water and flooding. It also noted that by converting streets to one-way, they were talking in that proposal to make the streets one-way, and one-half of the street would become grass or some surface that allowed for the infiltration down and through the, the ground. And so, and we did not go with that, which I understand why that, that, we had some traffic concerns, so we did not vote for that. However, as you look at what is being built, we have things that are being built that are on vacant lots. We have 50-style bungalows that are being taken down and rebuilt with much larger structures. So this, this discussion item is really to discuss, do we keep moving on with business as usual, or should we be looking at the building code and moving in a different direction based on the situation with flooding? And could we potentially be negatively impacting the situation by allowing more concrete on house slabs, or, you know, not looking at the type of impervious surface? And you'll see 50% of the lot is allowed in commercial building, in our commercial zones, and in R1 and R2, it, it's 35% of the lot size. So as we discuss this, and we being the city manager and I, he said that some cities have put in a maximum impervious surface ratio, so that we can absolutely maintain some of those natural ways to filter water. And it's concerning, as we're looking at trying to address, making sure we're getting that flooding and all that water contained, I don't want us to be, end up being in a situation where we haven't addressed this or looked at it, and I'm not sure if we have. So that's what this agenda item for me was. And so, do, the Mead Hunt specifically mentioned too much concrete in those areas? And so I wanted to bring it to council to discuss, should we be looking at this? Are there modifications for that area only that we may want to consider, from where the tidal valve is being constructed, all the way down to Ridgewood, where we have flooding in these Presidential Streets? Are we, have we looked at this? You know, since I'm a new council person, I don't want to say that we haven't. And would it, is it something that we might want staff to look at? Because we've got a lot of impervious concrete down in that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Willis.
I think two months ago, we had the workshop with the P&amp;Z Board and council, and this was brought up, about the concerns of flooding in our code and building codes, and how we could alter all of that. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but city manager, isn't departments looking at that already?
Yes, there is an effort underway right now. And if the mayor would like, I'd ask maybe Zach to come up and talk about what efforts we are making in this area.
I think that would be fantastic.
Well, Kyle?
While he's coming up.
I'm just, I'm getting it wrong, I'm guessing the wrong person.
Hey, Kyle.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So yes, I did miss the, the beginning of this, I was walking some dogs, sorry for being a little late. But we are, we are beginning to draft some impervious surface codes, some ratios, to cover, basically, right now, the code will cover maximum lot coverage, which really doesn't factor in things like driveways, or, you know, pool decks, or anything like that. So we have been beginning to draft that, and we're working with the Regional Planning Council on that. But, yeah, I mean, anything you guys, any questions you have, be happy to-
Can you talk about the efforts with the comp plan?
Yeah.
Dates for that?
Sure, so the peril of flood legislation was passed by the Florida Legislature a couple years ago now. And, and it really is what it says, it's addressing concerns regarding flood, flood insurance, basically bringing our comp plan up to date with new sections, mostly to coastal management, but also to future land use, and a few other elements, just regarding coastal high-hazard areas, enhanced resiliency areas, a few different ways of identifying particularly vulnerable, vulnerable areas, and not, sort of limiting certain uses, so for example, like assisted living facilities can't be built in certain enhanced resilience areas, is what they're called. And that's just the, the state legislature mandated that. So, so we're working on those right now. We actually have a meeting with Todd on Thursday to go over some comments that he had, but we should have those to you guys pretty soon.
What's the due date for those comp plan amendments that we have to be done by?
So we will need to be done by this year, in order to-
And then, so the thinking is, correct me if I get this wrong, the thinking is, these types of initiatives for a maximum impervious service, surface ratio, for example, can go into this submittal for this comp plan update, this cycle, this year. And that's what, that's the goal, is staff working with P&amp;Z, as I understand it. And is this, is this item coming before P&amp;Z?
That's, yes, it will be, it will have to go before P&amp;Z.
Do we have that scheduled currently?
We have a meeting in July that we, hopefully, I mean, depending on how the meeting goes on Thursday, and obviously Anthony will need to look at it, but we'll have to, have to take it to P&amp;Z at one of these next meetings.
Thank you, Kyle. So the way I see it, Mayor, is the idea of a maximum impervious surface ratio is already moving forward with P&amp;Z to be inserted into our comp plan updates, which are required to be finished by the end of this year. Once we get it in our comp plan, then it's just a matter of making codes that come out of that. Kyle, can you talk about how East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and I believe that gentleman from University of Florida, how they're tying in with that effort as well? Because they were part of that plan, joint meeting.
Yeah, so the joint workshop that we had in March, I think it was, maybe April, they are assisting us in the effort, and, and I think that joint workshop, the idea was to kind of start that conversation, and just get some ideas from you guys, from the Planning and Zoning Board, and to take that and turn it into not only comp plan amendments, but land development regulations. And so, so we're still working closely with them, as we have been for the vulnerability assessment, you know, a few other, a few other resilience-related.
Are we looking, I have a question, if you don't mind. Are we looking at certain code for certain areas? Because there may be areas of the city that has newer storm pipes under the street, and things due to impact fees and building in the area, like up higher hotels. However, the Presidential Streets are flooding, we've heard about Harbor Heights flooding. So I hope we're not, our, well, I, I would like to see if it was me, my choice, us looking at the vulnerability for certain areas, and making sure we're not just trying to fit a one-size-fits-all plan for the entire city, because we may have some areas that are more vulnerable than others. So how are you handling our, or are you handling that?
So that's sort of what the, the enhanced resilience area, that's part of the peril of flood legislation, the idea, and Lexi can describe it a little better than myself, but the idea is to, it's taking areas of the city that are particularly vulnerable, whether that's flood zone, or, you know, sea level rise, just different, different factors, and then overlaying economic importance. And so we have this, I can, I'd be happy to send over, we have a map, actually, that drafts what we have as our proposed ERA. We actually call it a AAA, an Adaptation Action Area, I think that's what it stands for. So, so in that way, and there will be more stricter regulations there. So, and we can look at other areas that, you know, are particularly affected, but there is, there is certainly a geographical element.
Okay, and then, so another question I have is that, since this is all in the works, currently, we're just going by the O code, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
I might want to stay close to the rest of the council, any other comments at this time? Mayor Pro Tim?
I just, I think that, you know, as, as we can expedite this, is, because, like Councilman Jackson said, there's a lot of old houses that are being knocked down and new houses. There's one in our neighborhood that has taken up every inch of the, of the property, and it, and it's concerning to the neighbors that, you know, when we have a bad storm, what's going to happen? So, I mean, whatever we can do to help get these codes going and changing to, because it's going to happen a lot, that these old houses are being destroyed and new houses are put there.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Davis, or Willis? My comments are, excited to see those things come to fruition. Thank you for putting this on. If anything, as Mayor Pro Tim says, I think it's just a testament to, we fully support the efforts that are already happening today, and the sooner, the better, in the face of hurricane season. I think we've heard tonight, the concerns around the hurricanes with pumps and storm water, and there's a lot happening around it, but the code today really limited to the building percentages, I think you said, but as Kyle has shared, does not include parking lots, pools, or any other impervious surface. And so, Millis, Massachusetts, I think, I've said this in the past, I mean, they literally have a impervious surface tax. And so, through LiDAR data, some of the same technology that I think gave us this map.
That's great.
You know, they take your lot, get a one-acre lot, and 50% of it's impervious. That is the formula, the number that they use for taxing, which is very interesting. I'm not suggesting that, I'm sharing that as an example of what another comparative policy or community did. And I don't know if it was successful, I've never really followed up or looked into that, or even allowed in the state of Florida, but I think we are tackling it with being able to move the water, as Chairman Russell was talking about, the need in harbor heights, pump stations, and those low areas. But this is working sort of on the other end of, of the issue. And we did relax, also the green parking that we did, in relaxing the parking standards, I think is a step in the right direction. My whole position has been, you know, today, we require impervious surface, you can't build without paving, we've relaxed some of that in some areas. To go, it would be a better step to say, you know, this much is required, but if you want to pave, right, you can. And I don't think a lot of folks, when you factor the uses, are going to expend that extra cost. And the, the final would be, you know, you're required, right, to have so much, that, I think we need to be a little careful there, but we are moving in a direction to depave as much as we can. And I think that folks will, will naturally do that, and strategically focusing on the problematic areas first, which we're doing. I know we've talked about expanding the funding for Fillmore, and, you know, that, the, the streets, or that CR, the expenditures to expand in the capital improvement, to add Fillmore into the Presidential Streets master plan, without a comp plan. And even though required, or any code changes, I think we can still take action on public-owned facilities. I mean, that's where we have the most control, such as roads and sidewalks, and maybe adopt some of the more innovative, newer, it'd be a great street to start on. Those are my comments. I'm supportive of moving this forward, and thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Willis?
Well, I just wonder if there's some way that we can incentivize people as they repave or whatever, to remove some of that impervious surface. You know, we have all these large parking lots. I know in, in North Carolina, on the Outer Banks, they have a lot of, I forget what exactly they call it, but it looks like concrete blocks turned sideways, where the grass is growing up through it, it supports traffic, it supports parking, but water just goes right on through. If we can incentivize anyone repaving, or, or paving a parking lot, or, or creating something to use materials such as that versus any requirement to have a pervious, an impervious surface, excuse me.
And I'd also just want to add that we are getting some more, even better LiDAR data from the NSF grant, they're doing drone flights, they're getting even better data, so we'll probably have an even more accurate version of this map, so we can know areas to target.
That's exciting. I'm excited to see all the GIS in the mapping, give us great information. Thank you. Any, Councilmember Jackson?
I'm sorry.
Your item? No, please, wrap us up.
I love that idea, as far as, because that would bring immediate relief to some, with some development. Some developers would do that. I wonder if there's a way that we, as we're getting this work through the process, since it's not in place yet, is there any way that we can identify new permits, when people apply for new permits, builds that might end up increasing the runoff because of the lot? For example, some of the Presidential Streets already have a big, older complex with a huge parking lot. If there's a lot next to that, and someone wants to build it out as well, then we could be, even though they go by what our building code is at right now at this time, we might end up causing more runoff that way. So is there a way that we can, anything that we could put into place, so that we could identify ones that might increase storm runoff until we get this fully into place, and handle those builds differently? And I know that's not normal, because of the building code. But I think that, looking at the flooding, we have to do what we need to do. But, I mean, is that even a possibility?
Well, we have to enforce the regulations that we have. If, if it is in there, we will enforce it, but if it's not in there, we can't enforce it.
Should we put something temporarily in there until we get through with this whole process, or how long do we think the process will take to get all of this into place?
I mean, probably, now that it's, it's a priority, so, you know, within the next few months, we can certainly get you guys something.
For a comp plan?
For this, yes, for the comp plan, but also, I think, we've started drafting the land development regulations, and some of the existing comp plan requirement, or elements sort of speak to impervious surface, so I, I think we can find something in the comp plan that's already there, that we can use for the land development regulations.
So how long will it take us to get the building code updated, including these things that we've identified and updated via the comp plan? Just a guess, and I know I could change.
Yeah, so we'll have to get, obviously, the ordinance drafted, and once we, once we have that, I mean, that'll be P&amp;Z and then two council meetings, maybe Dave, you can speak to this. Dave's going to bail me out.
Three meetings, minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, Lamar's coming up, too, you're getting all the-
We're getting all of the knowledge.
All the, all the brain power here. My, yeah, I mean, typically, the way we do things is we get our comprehensive plan updated, we want to get those policy statements in place in our comprehensive plan, and then our land development regulations are, follow and implement those large policy comments and statements. I think what I hear you saying, Kay, is that, in the interim, while we're working on this, because it, I mean, tip, really, realistically, it could be six to nine months before comp plan and land development regulations are done and adopted, and everything's going. So it sounds like you'd like to do something in those intervening nine months. I mean, this is where Anthony can step in, our city attorney. I mean, communities oftentimes will, I don't want to call it a, a moratorium, because we're not, we're not shutting down development, but I think what we, we could do is, is we could, we could put in place some, some interim measures that the council could consider, we could present to the council some interim measures to address this issue. We'd have to work very carefully with Anthony, he's giving me a frowny face.
And maybe including- And maybe including like Dawn's idea that would give some incentive as well. I just know a lot can be built in nine months.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to plant an idea in your minds. There are things that we can do interim, as Dave says, we can do interim measures. As far as paving is concerned, we can, we could, this is an idea. The P and Z is going to have to talk about it and flesh it out. But we could put in a recommendation before the council to have, to require pervious concrete. You can buy that stuff. It'll percolate water. It's like concrete, but it's a little more costly. So, I mean, we can kick that around and we could require that immediately, pervious concrete. And that way, you'd increase dramatically, immediately, the ability to put water back in the soil and still have your paving and your development. Another idea, and you can think about this, is if pervious concrete is expensive, then fine, maybe we, the city, can look at a way to reimburse the builder for the extra cost of pervious concrete. Not the entire cost, but the extra over above impervious. Think about that. We can do a lot of things very quickly to put water back in the ground.
We have stormwater funds too.
Yep. And you took the words out of my mouth to connect this. Thank you, Chairman Russell. I know the incentives. I think flooding is blight when we see those photos of, and we know our CRA is there. We know that that doesn't cover the entire city. But yes, if it's double the price to do pervious, well, we do have a matching grant program and kind of have a lot of latitude in there. Maybe that fits in there if it's not already in some capacity.
If we can find a way to take the extra cost out of it, I don't see why anybody would object to using pervious concrete.
Thank you. Kyle?
Yeah, I was just going to say that low-impact development is eligible for the property improvement grants. And in fact, I mean, we could, you know, in the scoring system, give some priority to those types of projects. We could look into doing something like that.
Anything else on this one?
No, I just appreciate, you know, everyone giving us this information. It, to me, it's a big thing because this is four or five years later that we've been having those streets flood. And so, we've got to look at what we can do that will give us impact right now. And these kinds of discussions, I'm appreciative because we don't want people losing property and fire vehicles and homes, and we've got a busy storm season projected for this year. So it, to me, it's important to look at whatever alternatives we can look at to get water off the streets.
May I say one more thing? You mentioned Councilwoman Jackson, the, try not to use one size fits all in our discussions about drainage and all. We've been thinking about special measures for special places. You know, one size does not fit all in this drainage problem. We ought to concentrate on the most affected areas first. And we will. We will talk about those and try to get something massaged and something you can all live with.
I look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I was just, I was just going to add, you know, the chairman of the P and Z brings up a good point about the paving, but also, if you're looking at interim measures, perhaps you can look at lot coverage. Lot coverage has a very limited definition. It only includes enclosed structures under the zoning code. And while each zoning district has a maximum lot coverage, let's say 40% for R1, the city is only looking at the enclosed buildings. And that does not include paved areas or any other hard surfaces that are impervious. So that might be another thing to look at. Maybe the P and Z can kick around.
City Manager, any comments or any?
No, these are all great ideas, and I'm glad that the whole team is working on these. It's good discussion.
Great. Thank you all. Counsel, any word? Councilmember Jackson, this is your item?
I'm good.
Good to go? I don't think any actions needed, other than look forward to seeing the progress. Thank you all. Okay. That wraps up item number eight under item for discussion. And we now have two more items, item number nine and 10. Do we want to proceed, or would a break be good now? We can do one. I would like to have a break before 10, if possible, but we can do it now if needed. Anyone? City Manager?
Sure.
Good?
I'm good for a break if you want. Do nine, sure.
This is your item. You okay with that? Okay. Mayor Protem Kellum, this is discussion on the role of Mayor Emeritus. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, back in 2019, we appointed Rocky as Mayor Emeritus. And it was a motion I brought up, and it was seconded, and we passed it. And it's been five years. And I appreciate Rocky. I love Rocky. And he has such a good relationship with the citizens. He's done a lot for our city. I just am wondering, you know, if he's out there being the ambassador on this, for the city and speaking to people, we haven't gotten a report or anything that he's working on that would, and his knowledge and his historic knowledge for the city and things that we're going through as far as flooding and this and that. He has a lot of knowledge that he could share with us and share with us what he's talking to in the city with us. I would just, you know, when we originally did this, it was, you know, for him to be the ambassador to, and he has all the rights as a, to the City Hall as a council person. But if we don't get a report or know what he is talking to people about or any help for us, because we need help, I just don't know, you know, if he needs to have access to all of what's happening in City Hall. I just think that I would really like to have his insights on different things we're working with and a report maybe, you know, in the beginning of our meetings on what he's talking about or who he's talking to and what he thinks we could do better. I think that would be really important. And like I said, I, he is like a matriarch of our city, and I just would like more of his input, you know, at a meeting, in the beginning of a meeting, and just let us know what we can do to make our council meetings better, our communication with the residents better, what he thinks. So that's what I'm looking for, just some kind of feedback from Mr. Randalls and his help. He's, you know, like, has a lot of history here in the city. Excuse me. And I just think that, you know, if he, if he has access to the things in the city, you know, websites, this, that, emails, it would be really, really be nice to know what he's doing out there and how he's helping us. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Counsel, if we don't have any more discussion, that she's helped introduce the item. I did have a card from Mayor Emeritus. Rocky? Now, the item has arrived. Thank you for being here, as you have said many times.
Well, Mayor, I thank you. I commend you first as the job, looking at the clock and the time and saying, hey, we're one minute ahead. I don't think I ever got that far. But Mayor, Mayor Protem, staff, residents, and Lamar Russell, we kind of grew up together in the 1980s. In fact, that storm you're thinking about is a no-name storm, right? I think so. And we did, at that time, we did put larger storm drains in there because I cut the bougainville on Mayor Ferkens' house because he couldn't cut it to put it in. I think it was between yours and his. Were you next to Mayor Ferkens?
Not far away.
Okay. But there are, I don't know if there's any records kept, but they did have a bad flood. That's one that rained for three days and three nights.
Rocky, when that happened, you were out in front of my house digging the leaves and everything out of the drain back then.
Yeah, that's true. That was one of the things we, we kept. Anything that was good down the drain did, whether it was basketball, cats, whatever. But in any event, that's true. I've worked there. But that may be something, it probably is no record of us putting in that eight-inch over the little four-inch line there. But it's, back to the question that you asked. Yes, I try to stay out of the city business, out of devoted, it used to be 50/50 with city and residents, and now I pretty much devote most of the time to the residents, whether it's replacing flapper valves in toilets or cutting bougainvillas on mailboxes or our yards or taking Christmas tree lights down, things like that. I try to stay away deliberately so as not to be an influence. I can bring you up on several things that we are working on, we as me and some other place. One that I just spoke to Todd to a few times ago, where the old Palms East, which was our single-family children, old Berryhead people, place to live, was sold by Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm running out of time. It was sold by Jeff Wells to a real estate investment corporation. They come in with the idea and raised the rates to $1,800 a month. Our single parents with children cannot handle $60 a day for rent. And anyhow, the long and the short of it is, I have been working with them, their group, they've come down with a new start of what it actually costs. And I'll end it with that.
No, Mayor Emeritus had just liked that. Counsel, please, and we can pause the clock for now. Take your time. Thank you.
Okay, well, there's several things that I have worked on, but it's mostly unimportant things to the city if you're putting a new flapper valve in somebody's toilet because it's running all the time. But to that person, it saved $110 from the plumber. It means a whole lot. So my efforts have been pretty much with the residents individually as they need help rather than stand out. I'd be happy to report for every, I get a report occasionally from, an invitation from, for instance, come to the new display that got rained out up here for the library. I get invited. I attend everything I'm invited to. If I could be some help, I don't want to take away any of the authority or the wisdom of the council members or their chance, because I had a chance of that. Lamar and I did that in 1980 when he was my mentor on the Planning and Zoning Board with Richard Tirm and Ann, a long time ago. So he was my mentor, and he's still a mentor, coming up with good ideas. I may add one quick thought. You've already got a mile ahead of where you think you are by looking at that map. It was up on the board with the blocks that are red, which says it's 90%.
Impervious.
Impervious. Look at those blocks like he said and find it, because you've got them already identified. I don't know who did that, but there's a year's worth of work in that. What percentage of the lot on that block is either red, orange, yellow, green, or whatever? So talk it over. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for bringing it up and.
Well, we just, I would like to see more of you, Rocky, at the meetings and, you know, come and tell us what you're doing and I'm proud.
All it takes is asking me. I'm not going to enshoo and say, look what I done.
Okay.
But I'd be glad to come up. Incidentally, is that the finance director over there? If you read down in this, and I'm being laborious, but I went in my garage and picked up the 2019-25 resolution, which got printed up there. And some things that I read it frequently, but some things that I haven't taken avail of is duties and privileges upon your approval, prior approval to the city manager, city council on subject to budget appropriations, direct payment or reimbursement by the city expenses, official approved duties of mayor or mayoritas such as memberships, events, meetings, meals, mileage. And I don't believe I've ever hit you with anything, have I? And I don't expect to. This is, it's a fun thing. I did have not asked for my retirement pay, and I talked to the mayor and Todd recently about this. The retirement pay, I have never asked for, but I would be willing to ask for it and give it to the police, whatever you have, because I don't need it and don't want it. I'm still able to mow the grass, and I'll keep it. If you, if you, we mentioned it, both of you together. If you have an idea how we can use that, I'll put it in retirement slip and give you the monthly check, whatever it is. Todd?
Yes, the mayor and I did speak with you about that idea, and I think it's very generous and very gracious of you. We talked about maybe doing a Rocky Randalls fix-up fund, and just people wanted to apply for money from that fix-up fund. That's where this money could be drawn from. And if there's interest in pursuing that, Counsel, I'm happy to work on that.
But it, Brouard County quit with the recycled paint, and I've probably painted more houses than most people in Cape Canaveral with recycled paint. It's either light green, dark green, light brown, dark brown, light blue, dark blue. Rich, yeah, no, I didn't have any purple. Gestapo did that. I didn't do it. But if you wish to do that, I'll simply ask Todd to submit the paperwork, and if you can find a place to put that money to help people that really need it, we have a lot of situations that they'd, they'd be glad to have someone to paint their house or tear down the bougainvillea. So, thank you. I've overstayed much. Well, shout if I can be any help. I won't come asking, but if you need anything, I think I could probably supply it.
Thank you.
Me in the garage.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Emeritus, all the things that have been said. I echo your dedication to the city and the item that you brought up as far as being able to redirect those funds for a cause that is best. I think I would love to invite you to the next meeting or two, whenever I think our city manager and maybe city attorney get their arms around something that would work well when you're ready and have you at that meeting. And I think we could do that in a special way and make that something memorable. And if you could be a part of it, that would be my request, so.
The only request I would take is that obviously he knows your Rocky's fund or something. Just, he just goes to either the library, the library fund, whatever, and that would be what we're hoping. Whatever it takes, I don't need any recognition.
And I feel a little, as a former postmaster and a little partial to those thorny bougainvillas around mailboxes. Thank you for all you've done and continue to do for our city. As far as the item and the role as Mayor Emeritus, I share the same. That appointment, there was no better. Your appointment literally created the position that did not exist. And we've even talked about, you know, is there ever, you know, anyone else? And my answer is no, moving forward. And so, you are the testament of volunteerism and dedication, and if you count it all the hours, it's a significant amount of time, and you continue to do. But on the business of the city, that separation, I just want you to know is we feel that void. I do, at least. And so, coming back and if you want to, if you're willing to get more involved into those things, and I understand that you haven't taken those funds, you know, for reimbursement or travel, but we do, I think, want to use that money. out in the community to help advocate and support. And so, thank you again, and maybe if it's not the next meeting but the following one, we can try to get together and understand today, if you're more on the people's side, those items in the resolution. Are they working out for you the way you had hoped? Is there ways that we can improve the resolution? Are there things we do not need to do? We had a chance to chat about this, and so those are my comments. I think we should keep this in front of us, and maybe at the next meeting or two, we can try to tackle that request that he made. I'd like to take as fast as possible on that. And then also get back to Mayor Protem's discussion item on how we can get more involved with somebody as knowledgeable as Rocky about the business of the city. So, thank you. And if it's, again, something that you want to do and are willing to do, if it starts to take away from those passions, maybe we can talk about taking that pressure off or whatever makes sense. But thank you again, Councilmember Jackson.
Mayor Randles is being humble. He is. Now, you had told me that you were working with some of the service personnel on getting transportation to their jobs to the area because they couldn't afford to live here anymore. It was after you had discussed the rent increase at Palms East, and you didn't mention that, that you were working with them. So what I wanted to mention that he's been doing more than just the Palms East part of it. You have been working with some people, with some of the service people, being able to get over here. Will you tell us about it? Don't be humble.
Yeah. I'm kind of working on a save our school program right now. It doesn't need any real publicity, but as more and more of our single parents move out and school's out and moving times up, I move three or four a month to other locations that are within their budget, that we no longer have Section 8, if you're familiar with it. And that was really a savior of a lot of those people. Military, I've run across a couple now that military that was living over here, one in wheelchair, has moved to Titusville into an affordable housing situation, which proved not to be affordable. And the rent that they were paying was to only go towards the rental of the apartment. It's a condominium on the east side of Washington going north into Titusville. And lo and behold, it's a condominium, and now they've gotten their notice that for their maintenance and their pool and their supplies and that kind of stuff is an additional $428. And it was in the contract, sad to say. It was disclosed, but people don't read seven pages of contracts. And the two people on social security came to my porch with a neighbor and says, "You know, what are we going to do?" Well, I don't know. It's legal. It was in the contract that they signed that the $500 goes to the rent on the apartment. The maintenance is a whole nether kettle of fish in condominiums. I don't know where that's going. But yeah, we have a lot of military people, older people, perhaps my age or even older, that are living on darn near nothing. And you know, probably you're on the street more than I am. I walk the development over there. I don't call it a project. I walk the development. I've shared with Todd, we have a new manager that a real estate investment company has just put in over there, and there's going to be some adjustment in the rents. But whether it's enough to help the people that need it, I don't know. But there's a bigger need than most others realize. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Callum, for putting this on. I look forward to continuing to connect with you. It's very good to see you. Thank you for the update. Just that last story is very valuable, just understanding, you know, what real Cape Canaveral citizens are feel. We are all out there, but you are too, and we can't be everywhere. And so your opinion is valued, and we want to hear more of it, when you feel like it and if you feel like it. And just hope you're not staying away from the business of the city in the fear of any interference. I don't think that resolution is pretty clear. You're a goodwill ambassador, and I think we can make some more progress from this. So thank you again.
Anything else, Mayor Protem?
No.
Okay. I don't think any actions needed here. City manager, anything you needed to say? I know you were leaning forward earlier. I hope I didn't miss you.
I understand. I'll work with Anthony and staff. We'll put together something for Rocky's retirement fund.
I love that. Thank you. Okay, we can go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. I did... We're at 7:37 PM. This is the last agenda item, number 10. I'd like to request that we take a 10-minute break and reconvene, let's just say, back at 7:50. About 13-minute break. So with that, we'll recess now and circle back then. Thank you.
All right, it's 7:50. We'll get started here in about a minute. All righty. Councilmember Jackson, I think, is the one we're waiting on. Just can't be last. Oh, good. All right. Okay. Right on the city attorney, I think he'll be back soon. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. It is 7:53 PM. Just took a recess here. We are at the end of the agenda items that we have scheduled to take action on. We are on discussion item number 10, which is an update to the January 24, 2024 special council meeting. City manager, if you want the city attorney here now or just... Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So this is a monthly report we're keeping on the council agenda. This one, like the other one, starts with Fillmore and then moves on to Jackson and talks about recommendations. Quickly, on the Fillmore project, a lot of the words were taken out. We didn't need to keep reprinting this information every time we put responses in the Laserfish public folder there. So when you see on the right there, it's got all that information in there. As far as this one, this was building permit inspections report. That's all in there. Then we've got obtained the engineering report. Obviously, that's the Kimley Horn report, and that is available as well there. Scrolling down, next one was FPL and their response there. And then number four was utilizing engineering report exercise available remedies to gain compliance. So that's where staff remains in communication with the contractor towards making sure that they know exactly what we're looking for to get the site completed. And there's a goes out at least once a week, sometimes twice a week, an updated task list to city council about where our latest efforts have focused on that. And we'll continue to produce that until that comes to completion. And then finally, on number five there is city manager and city attorney present any findings and opportunities in a report to be distributed to council in ways the city can improve our community development department. That will be forthcoming also. The effort, tonight's effort more was on Jackson than on Fillmore. So mayor, if I could just move forward through to that one. Like the previous item, number one also was requiring requesting a report of all actions that's been put in Laserfish. Then we've got number two is create and distribute administrative procedures reviewed and approved by our city attorney, complying with state law and city code to be followed by our city code enforcement officers. That is currently in development. It's an SOP document, standard operating procedures. That we'll be talking more about that in the attachment here, and that will be available probably within the next month or so. Then for number three is for city code enforcement employees, the required certifications and training. That's also in Laserfish. I'm next, the third page. Problem with the microphone? Are you able to hear me through this microphone? Yep, okay, all right. Okay. Number four is distribute a monthly BSNA report of all open code enforcement cases. That started last month. We have another one coming out later this week. And number five is where I really want to focus tonight. This is present any findings and our opportunities and to be distributed to city council in ways the city can improve our community development department as relates to code enforcement. So it's a C attachment two to be presented tonight. So with that, I'd like to skip ahead to attachment two. I see this as a companion document to the report of findings that was distributed on May 7, and I'll just read from this here. During the January 24 special council meeting, council reached consensus on a number of tasks, one of which was to present the findings and opportunities to be distributed in ways we can improve our community development department that relates to code enforcement, specifically code enforcement concerns related to the property at 11216, 18 and 20 Jackson, and also an involved neighboring property located at 7802 North Atlantic Avenue. Resulting from that January meeting, review was undertaken to understand what code enforcement department actions may have contributed to the concerns. The review involved interviews by the city manager with Peg Schaller, David Dickey, Brian Palmer and Chris Robinson. A report of findings was produced. It was presented on May 7, 2024 special city council meeting. The report of findings helped frame what happened in an unbiased, objective manner. The report did not include recommendations. Recommendations are included in this document, and they're built upon the findings of that previous effort. Also included are additional observations and analysis which supports the recommendations. This document is broken into two sections. We've got a section which is clarification and summarization of each finding with associated determinations of root causes. And then section two is recommended actions. So mayor, I'm going to kind of hit on some of these on a higher level because we're probably all very familiar with a lot of the details that don't need to be repeated, but we can certainly go back into those details if we want to.
Sounds good.
I think what I really want to hit on is the root causes here. The first item, which was about applying different code enforcement milestone timeframes to different properties. This is the one where Mrs. Schaller indicated that, hey, I got a hit with a notice violation this quickly after I did this, but this other person or this other property did not in this excessive amount of time. For that one, there was also a building permit involved. And so the first one talks, and the root cause is involved, there was no established procedure for coordinating code enforcement matters between code enforcement officers and the building official. So that's why the permit was able to come in, get reviewed, get approved, get finalized, and code enforcement didn't even know about it. It was related to their code enforcement case. There was no procedure in place for that. The second was there is no established target timeframe for a number of days from the initial site inspection to the date of the issuance of notice violation. And we know that that's a critical milestone date to track. We've been looking at those now in the monthly reports. That having access to that data would have caught, two years ago, would have caught a lot of this and solved it. We didn't have access to that data. We do now. No established tool to identify and compare cases. Well, that's obviously the monthly report. That's the tool that we're using, and that that report can evolve and get better. And then finally, on this item, there was a lack of coordination between the code enforcement department, building official and the fire official in general about knowing what was going on with this with this properties. So those are the root causes, and you'll see those talked about in the recommendations as we go below. And we can come back and revisit any of these, mayor, if we want to. Issue number two was about incorrect public information where Mr. Dickey unintentionally asked Brian Palmer to respond to the city council's request for information incorrectly. Instead, Mr. Palmer was only asked to provide documents in the BSNA system. Other documents responsive to council's requests also existed outside of the BSNA system. The response for the root cause there is staff did not verify their request for information, which was stated in the minutes before responding to council's request. Moving on to the next item, number three. This one is about maintaining case files and the BSNA records. This is where there were links available to the public which had titles of documents that they couldn't open. And when a public records request was made for them, they were provided, and they were, they turned out to be working draft documents, which had been saved over, copied over, and no longer reflected that original document that they were intended to be, which created a lot of confusion in the records. Well, why are these out there? So my findings there, there was a lack of a full and accurate understanding that certain document formats appear as an unopenable link on the public BSNA portal. There is no established policy regarding the types of documents which should and should not be publicly accessible via the public BSNA portal. Of course, any record can be, that's a public record, but why promote these records that you can't even open that are confusing? They shouldn't even be put out there. A failure to differentiate between draft records and official records and properly label such records in response to a public records request. That would have been very helpful if that was done properly. And finally, just general poor record keeping. Item number four is a contention that Brian Palmer stated that code enforcement only sends notices to the property owner. This was the YouTube video. It was, it was an incomplete statement at that time. It wasn't clarified until later. The initial oral statement was open to misinterpretation because it was incomplete. And the code enforcement employee, this is another issue. The code enforcement employee did not follow departmental practice to include property owner as respondent in notice violation. And that, that's an employee performance issue because the directive of the department has always been, when you have a leanable property, you, you make sure you cite the owner as respondent. So that was not followed properly. Item number five, debris outside the garage in the garage door operation. This one was, the root cause was there is no uniform department practice to instruct that code enforcement officers are required to photo document compliance inspections. They were required to photo document violation inspections. When you see a violation, take a photo, date stamped, but not when you, not when you find something in compliance. There was no procedure for taking the photos when they're in compliance. Had that been there, this would not be an issue. There would be, there would be proof or there would not be proof from the code enforcement perspective side. All we have, what we do have is proof from the other side that, you know, that doesn't appear to have been accurate. But this is what we can do is put this policy in place. Also, there was, the code enforcement officer relied on the statement of the, of the owner about the operation of the garage door rather than verifying it himself that it was opening and closing. And that's against the department policy as well. You're supposed to verify that and not accept verbal statements. So there's definitely some, some personnel issues here coming to light on performance issues. On issue number six, this was about cowboy in the chair. And having found that there was no violation, the code enforcement officer should have just ceased efforts. You don't, you don't continue to press with code enforcement when there's no, there's no violation. So that was another issue. Issue number seven, to me, this is the most significant issue, the fire issue, securing the unsafe structure from trespass. The, the policy that the department had been using in this case is when you have a fire and the building official placards it unsafe, unfit for occupancy, then caution tape is put over the entry to wherever that facility would be. That was the training that they had, so that's what they did. Also, to notify the code, the code enforcement is to notify the BCSO if there's a trespass concern. And the BCSO did get out, go out there, and they were told by the owner that he did not want to file a trespass affidavit. So months went by with Mrs. Schaller continuing to say, hey, these people are still getting up there. They're, they're walking on a fire damaged roof to access these apartments. It's unsafe. So code enforcement would do what their training was, was to go and put some more caution tape up there. Well, over time, it should have become evident that was not getting the job done. So my findings here are there was no established practice to coordinate with the building official and fire official to expeditiously and effectively restrict access to fire damaged properties commensurate with the public safety related concerns regarding securing the unsafe structure from trespass. Second, the officer should have affected the securing of the unsafe structure sooner. And third, the code enforcement manager and community and economic development director should have intervened sooner to secure the unsafe structure. I believe it was some 15 months that went by before it was actually effectively secured. Next on here, we have information that was received after the May 7 distribution of the report of findings. Mrs. Schaller was at that meeting, and she produced some evidence indicating that the rocks couldn't have been in the swale on May 24. She subsequently provided that evidence to us, and I'm thankful for that. Certainly cast doubt on the accuracy and reliability of the May 24, 2023 case notes. And I've gone in looking through the audit functions of the notes of that section of BSNA, and I don't see that that entry was in there in January, on January 24. I didn't, I see what was put in prior to that, and that entry about cowboy making this complaint was not there on January 24. That was added sometime later. This, the, the department policy changed from using that field for actually typing data into, to removing the data from that and just uploading documents like a PDF document. And all I can surmise is that's when that came into being, is when that PDF document came into being. It was never seen in the native notes section of BSNA. To this day, I don't think it ever appeared in the native notes section. So I'm wondering, where did that information exist prior to being included in that PDF document? There was a number of PDFs that were uploaded, deleted, uploaded, deleted in a row. But that appears to be when this entered into the BSNA record, sometime after January 24. I don't know when. So certainly, the evidence that Mrs. Schaller presented cast doubt on the accuracy and reliability of the May 24 cast notes, case notes. Also, code enforcement employee did not follow departmental practice to photo document the violation that was allegedly witnessed on May 24, 2023. Again, that was a, that was a departmental procedure to photo document violations. If there was this violation of rocks in the swale on May 24, there should have been a photo documented piece of evidence in the code enforcement files for that. So that was not followed. Again, this underscores the need to document evidence of violations through the use of date and timestamp photos. So that is section one, and all of that leads me to section two, mayor, if I could move on to that about recommendations. There are three. Obviously, there's a personnel issue which I'm going to be dealing with. I've been working with staff, HR and city attorney about how to proceed. But I worked with the city attorney on this document as well, and, and we believe these are the recommended actions. First, retain the services of an experienced code enforcement administrative consultant to assess the city's code enforcement procedures, practices and the organizational structure of the department for purposes of recommending best practices to improve the department's organizational structure, services and internal controls. So that would be a contract with an external agency that we would bring in to kind of provide that audit of the department and how it functions. Second one is create a standard operating procedure manual, and this will establish the additional important operational procedures and guidelines. And we put in there several bullets. These are taken right out of section one above. But some other ones, for instance, you know, guidelines for requesting search warrants. There's a lot of good things that need to go into this written document will be used for training purposes as well. And then finally, the last recommended action is to retain the services of an experienced contract code enforcement officer to assist with the code enforcement caseload. That would be another contract or possibly the same contract with the, the first item. So my goal here is to be as transparent as possible with how we want to go about fixing this by bringing in an independent third party or a couple independent people, third party, to not only do the audit from the operational perspective, but actually have boots on the ground also that way as, as code enforcement. And I think that way we can demonstrate that we are actually giving this the, the best shake we can, the best chance to fairly address and correct the issues that led to this January 24. January 24th item. And full acknowledgement that if, if it happened here, it could have happened elsewhere and it could happen again. So we need to fix this. And I think this is a straight on, direct approach to correcting this, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I do have a public comment card on this one, counsel, if you're okay, we take it to the public. Ms. Schaller, I believe this is the one. Did you intend to speak or you're prior? You're good? Okay. If anyone else intended to speak, now that I've opened it, please raise your hand or come forward and anyone else home, listening online, please raise your hand and we'll unmute you. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate. Are you going through that? Counsel, any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
On the retain the services of an experienced code enforcement and administrative consultant, do you have any ideas on how long that we would retain the services?
I would think it would probably be a matter of weekly visits for maybe a month, for a few hours each time there's a visit and then just an hourly charge for that. I see that one as being a shorter term gig than the, the, the other one about a contract code enforcement officer. I see that as being a longer term assignment.
And we had talked about hiring an extra code enforcement officer before all of this to help with the caseload and the short-term rentals. So this, the, of a code enforcement officer experienced, he would report, he would be an employee or just a contracted service?
Just a contracted service.
And he would report to the council and the city manager on a monthly basis or how would that?
The, I, I see the first one definitely reporting to the manager and council. The code enforcement officer, I think, could have some value, but I don't know if they would come with any reporting. I would have to negotiate that.
And as far as effects on the budget, is this in operating expenses for this year? Have we?
We'll find a way to make it happen. She's asking about the budget.
It's on.
Mayor Protem Kellum is asking about the funds that would be used to pay for these contract services. Where does it come from?
Obviously, it would come from either professional services or the contract services line of that department within the general fund.
That's all the questions I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you. And I missed the first answer. I apologize. Your, your first question, Mayor Protem, was how long?
Yes, for the experienced code enforcement and administrative consultant, how long would, do you think a month is long enough, Todd?
Well, I, I would want the consultant to weigh in on that because they need to be comfortable that they can have enough time to assess exactly what they're going to be reporting on. So I hesitate to answer, but I, I was thinking maybe a month or two.
Yes, please. Councilmember Jackson.
For these contractors that, we have two different ones. These, the administrative consultant and of course the officer. Would be involved with those two people that will help this process?
The first one, the administrative consultant will be tasked with assessing our, all of the procedures, the evolving procedures of the standard operating procedures document, the, the historical practices that continue, the, looking at the organizational structure of the department. And then with all of that, making recommendations on best practices for improving based on all of those observations for organizational structure, services, and internal controls.
So would they help us implement those best practices then?
The recommendations, we, I would see that coming back as an update to this item, that this is what's recommended and we would like to pursue, pursue this. Or, you know, if there's something that's just, for whatever reason, we don't want to pursue, we could choose that course too. But I see that coming back to this council as, yeah.
And then with the code enforcement officer that's contractor, he would be literally just filling in for code enforcement to complete the tasks that need to be done for code enforcement, correct?
Yeah. And ideally, that would be, both, both people would be from the same firm. So that officer would report to that administrative consultant. So that administrative consultant can stay plugged in on the day-to-day what's going on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
So the contract code enforcement officer would be able to give active feedback?
Right.
On exactly what is, what he observes on a day-to-day basis?
Towards improving the processes, yes.
Okay. So that input would be captured by the administrative?
That, that's how I would request that this contract be written. The, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, I just recognize that somebody actually doing the work will see things somewhat differently than someone observing process.
Yes.
So that, I would, I would really like to see in the contract that that person provides additional input.
Yep.
Thank you.
Member Davis, anything?
This is a good idea because it will get an outsider view and I'm sure that they would come up with a lot of recommendations that could possibly help. So I'm, I'm for doing it.
Thank you. And thank you again, city manager, for putting this together. So this is just backing up from where we began. January 24th, there were 10 tasks. The attachment, we, we received the update on all of those tasks today. That's, there's some new information in there compared to the last.
Yeah, where, where information is now stored in Laserfish now, instead of being represented here.
Okay. And this specific attachment to opportunities to improve community development department as it relates to code enforcement is related to task number five?
Of the second half, yeah.
Yes, which was, I'm going to read it. Present any findings and/or opportunities to be distributed to the city council on ways the city can improve our community development department as it relates to code enforcement. So these are really that, these aren't the, oh yeah, these are the findings with root causes and then the recommendations.
Yes, sir.
So item number five, this is fulfilling that.
Yes, sir.
The, this, you and the city attorney had a chance to go through this together? And what I want to just back up and say is, this was put on in January because what was, I guess, council's practice and citizen practice, it wasn't working out well for the citizens, the parties, and I think me as, as mayor and formerly as a council member in the council. And so just want to remind that this was put on the agenda when we, we weren't able to get traction after a couple of years of, of challenges and, and problems. And since that meeting, we are now in June, I think it's roughly 140 days. But when you go back prior to that, there's issues on Fillmore and Jackson that today still are not resolved. And I think that putting this on in January put a spotlight on these two, but my concern was, you know, for Cape Canaveral as a whole, is well, what's happening across the board? And so I appreciate the comments today from Ms. Schaller, Peg, who talked about values because this council create, or at least approved the values. We went back a couple of years and did the revisioning. We set those values, they're up on our website. And those values are, some of them were, I guess, they come with explanation, but one word, values. I just want to read, read what those values are because I, I think it's important. We just took this up a couple of months ago and spent some time on them. But first, we, we know our vision. The city's mission, before going to the values, is important. The mission of the City of Cape Canaveral government is to provide excellence in municipal services by supporting a high quality of life, fiscal responsibility, and environmental stewardship while celebrating diversity and fostering innovation. The values, number one, in the word we just heard, commitment to excellence. The next value is our vision. Commit, well, let me just say, commitment to excellence is we believe our role is to make the City of Cape Canaveral the ideal community for our residents, businesses, and visitors. Vision is the next value. Dedication, that one says, we are dedicated to performing our duties to the best of our abilities and going above and beyond to achieve high-quality results. Accountability, we have a responsibility to one another and the public to perform our jobs effectively and efficiently and we take that responsibility seriously. Innovation, proactivity, we actively seek to identify and plan for issues before they arise with the aim of averting problems rather than having to solve them after they occur. Integrity, we strive to make decisions and take actions based upon what is right rather than what is expedient. We are honest and we own up to our mistakes. Teamwork, in recognition of the worth of each individual and their contributions to our mission, we value and honor one another and are committed to working together as one team. Civility, communication, we communicate openly, clearly, directly, and in a timely manner with one another and the community. And there's diversity, inclusivity, we even have fun as one. But I read some of the explanations of some of those because we all, those values apply to me, all of us, every person a part of our team and administration. And if we create those values, we are the body that needs to uphold them. And in a former meeting, we talked about core values and separating aspirational values. And I think Councilmember Willis had brought it and said, you know, we treat them all important. And I, that stuck, we did not change. And I think that's a, a good approach to it. But the ones that I think brought us here back in January was the working as a team, communicating, it wasn't working well. And I certainly was bringing my best. And January was sort of that point for Fillmore and Jackson that, that that was the only course of action we knew to take and, or that I knew to take. And I, and I thank the council for supporting to look into this. The, the alignment of what we've discovered here, and what I'm asking myself is from this, and the counts, and the demand, there does not have to be an answer today, but the question I want to raise is, when we read through all of the Laserfish, all of the findings and the recommendations that we have, is do we believe that we not forward looking yet, did we align with our values? Because we can move forward and if we don't stop and check that, what's the point of having them? And so I appreciate the, the information we've been provided, but I am having a very hard time seeing within as it relates to code enforcement and alignment with many of those values that I just read. And so these recommendations are good. And the root causes in those things are important. But the, in fairness, the tasks were not to see if it aligned with, with our values. I don't think that needs to be tasked. I think we bear that burden every day, all of us. And I've seen our values exceeded by city staff, employees, beyond my capacity to even think what's possible. We have knocked so many things out of the park, we'll fall short from time to time. But this became severe in this department. And being proactive before issues arise, when you talked about the code enforcement and the request, and it was, you know, the response for, was we have it under control and had we not put this on, I think we, we, we did not have the control that I felt we, that the citizens deserved and needed. And so the second thing is beyond values is code and state law. And that's why it was important that our city attorney and city manager work together. And when I read these root causes, I highlighted some of them. If we go to page attachment two, the first page of the, what we just received from our city manager, over on the far right-hand column where it says root causes, scroll down one more page, or yes, up, I'm sorry. So yeah, the first line there where it says root causes in the table, no, the, the first one is there's no established procedure. And I highlighted just that. And we go to the next one, no established target timeframe. Are you following along with me? Each one I went through and I tried to extract what the, the root, the root within the root, I guess you could say. So the third, no established tool. The fourth, lack of coordination. The last on this page, staff, or just does, it's more of a, did not verify. If we can go to the next page, lack of full and accurate understanding. The next one, no established policy. Failure to differentiate. Poor record keeping. Response was incomplete and not clarified until later. Incomplete statement, initial oral statement was open to misinterpretation because it was, the word is incomplete. The next one, did not follow departmental practice. Next one, no uniform department practice. The last The last one on that page, did not follow departmental practice. Go to the next page, thank you very much. The second one there, did not follow departmental practice. The, and then down towards the bottom. Did not follow departmental practice. And it's not about what, it was not followed, what, I, I'm going to make a point here. And as we go down to the, I think one more page, the last page. Oh, I think that was it. I'm, underscores that need to, I think that's, did not follow departmental practice. And so, nowhere in there does it talk about the code. Nowhere does it talk about state law. And so, we have our code, which is an established procedure. We have our state law, I think there's supplemental in there. And that's where my head was, was we have section of our city code, section 2, 250, 254 procedures in our code. And when I read through that, and then I look at this case and I apply those procedures, and I look at our values, there's a serious disconnect. And I'll just pause there and say that those were the issues that I saw was, did not follow, no established practice. I'll comment a little bit more on that. But I believe we will be approaching six months here, I think in July, from when we originally asked for this. And in all honesty and transparency, when this was brought in January, I thought, in my head, the next meeting or two. And we've pressed to get what we've got. I'm not sure we would be as far along as we were. And so, as far as the responses that we have today, I think we have to draw a line in the sand to Mayor Pro Tim's question of when this happens. On 90 days would be kind of the longest that I had in my head. We're going to be essentially double that. And I would like in July to take this in as a council, look at our values, look at the code, look at state law, and give our city manager, provide a response to the entire thing. And basically go down one through five for Fillmore, one through five, we have our responses. And whatever is completed at that time, I think we can certainly work off of. But we have so much to do in the city. And I know that the time and the resources that's went into this has been significant to two things. One is to improve internally, but also to affect that those property owners have problems and challenges today. And you can make these changes, but if it doesn't result in, in those properties being addressed, I think that's an issue. And when I read through those, going back to the full circle, no established procedure, no established target timeframe, no established tool, lack of coordination, did not verify requests for information, and it keeps going. Today, in our org chart, who is responsible, not the name, but what is the position in the org chart that's responsible for establishing procedures, establishing target timeframes, establishing tools, lack of coordination, or coordinating, verifying information? Because that department, in the org chart, as I understand it, today, we have the people at the top, the council, and it goes everything bottlenecks into our, pretty much on the administration, to our city manager. And then it goes, there's a director, a manager, and then a code enforcement officer. Very vertical, one-to-one, one. And I know, we have two code enforcement, so one, 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 two. And the, the response of, if I was to look at that, certainly not an expert on organizations, but when I see those lines, I think to myself, well, the upside of that is, wow, look at the layers that it would have to go to. And when would you need to go up the flagpole to figure something out? First is when a resident or a business owner, or any member of this community brings an issue forward, and they're working, and it does not get resolved. And then that issue is brought to the council, it does not get resolved, and then the council puts it on the agenda. And today, I think we can all agree, they're not resolved, and we're looking forward about how we're going to establish these procedures. Our code and state law provides a path, when I look at these, on exactly what we're supposed to do. Section 2, 254, and the procedures, under D as in dog and E as in elephant, D talks about repeat violators. And so, when I looked at the Jackson Avenue story, repeat violation for maintenance of the building, we had 2018, and we had 2019 notices of violations that went out. 2020 came, they were supposed to be taken up, those were never resolved. Or they were, compliance in the field, whatnot. But our code tells us that if those issues come back again, the way I understand it is that's a repeat violator. You can't, and that gives our city, our code enforcement officer, really where all their power is, and our city attorney, correct me, is the word initiate, that they have the ability to initiate a proceeding as an officer. Mayor Pro Tim, I, none of us up here can do that, and you, our code enforcement officer can initiate, and it gets on that path to resolve, to the code enforcement board at the time, or the special magistrate today, who has a different set of powers. And so, when this, these issues, whether it be Fillmore came, tried to work, it did not get resolved, it escalated to council, I'm talking, it went by years before it ever came, or, excuse me, months, at least one to two years, before it ever came to the January 24th meeting. But the particular property on Jackson had issues, and we had a tool in our belt to shorten the time allowed. That's, that's the point I wanted to make, is when you have a repeat violator, we do not have to afford them as much time. But even if we disagreed, that no, they, that would not qualify as a repeat violator. So, we had to give the time, time to it, to it, just from initiation to resolving it. The next one, E, talks about if there's a serious threat to the safety, welfare, health of the community, then we have to treat it like an emergency. We do whatever we can to notify them, but they can initiate an immediate proceeding. They can initiate it and get it right away and resolve. And you go, well, this isn't somebody because their house is a color you don't like, or some maybe aesthetic or issue that's not a life safety issue. This was a life safety issue that are trained, and we saw the training of, of our code enforcement officers, went out, and they never initiated. They never took that, even the first step, let alone pick one of the paths, until years after. But where they did take quick action was on issues that were not serious life safety issues, proving the expediency. And so, that's where my stomach turned, and I had a serious hard time with, with this. Because all of those things, no procedures, no timeframes, no tools, to me, there's a director, there's a manager, and there is an officer. The officer is initiating. The manager is ensuring that those cases are being followed and things are happening. And the director is there directing, coordinating, making, supporting the manager. And so, when we talk about bringing a consultant in to do, in my opinion, humbly, the job of what that very vertical team should be tackling, I think a consultant's great. But when I read through these, I see nothing about the code. What is an established, or what is a departmental practice? Is that a written document?
No, it's instruction from the manager.
Verbal?
Yes. It's training provided by the manager.
And today-
And face certification as well.
The standard operating procedures for that department during this period, we did not have this, any standard operating procedures.
My knowledge.
So, the only thing we had that we, in writing, was the code and state law, and a decision tree, which I think was a written guide. And so, if that's all we have with the power, I guess, to provide departmental practices, that's all we can apply. And so, I would like to request in July, a dedicated meeting before the regular council meeting to, to, to close this entire 10 action items out. I think I've seen enough to begin to work towards either adopting these recommendations that we have, and/or adding and amending them to, to a path that, that we can take action on. So, my hope was to express continued concern and frustration through, through these efforts. Because if an officer makes a mistake or does not do something, okay. Where are the other layers to help ensure? And the, the issue is the entire, I guess, the parties that have been involved, the positions in the org chart involved, that whole department functioning certainly needs all of the recommendations that, that our city manager talked about, and SOPs, and making sure we have those things in place. But I, I did not think it, it would take as long as it has. I would like to, to push towards the council, looking at the 10 items, looking at the responses, give the city manager the, the opportunity, obviously between then and whenever that meeting would be, to continue to add or to fulfill. But at some point, we have to say, do we have it all? And we haven't really had a chance to have it all because new things have popped up. And there's, I'm not going to go into the specifics of this item or that item as it, as it relates to this. But the, there's some major, major gaps that I do not, it's the, it's the entire department, not where I've seen employee. Employee tells me one. And I, and I just want to express that procedures, timeframes, tools, coordinations, I don't, I don't think that's the role of the, the officers. And today, full disclosure, I did ask for the job description of the Community Development Economic Director. So, the council is aware. I would encourage you to look at it as well, because I don't want to misalign with, the title of the January 24th was Community Development as it relates to code enforcement in the Building Department. And so, I stood back and said, it would be good to know what job description is in there absent, because that would be the third thing we'd have in writing that we can actually lean on and use. But departmental practices, verbal is, is a, not a good practice in itself. The practice of verbal practice, which I know that's stated in here, we've discovered some really good things. And I'm ready to, to put this behind. And the time and the delay, as far as these issues go on Jackson, is really no different with Fillmore. Because those issues started back, I was bringing those forward after they were not getting anywhere. And I think some questions were sent out, and they would not get answered. And so, that's when they would reach out to, to one of us or me. And then, they would get a reply, but their questions would not get answered. And we, we escalated it. And today, there's, I think we're looking at 600 days where these questions have been posed, and they're, they're not, they have not been answered within Fillmore Avenue, specifically from the Hurst family and some documents. And if you go in those color-coded responses, I think we've all seen, if you go through and you read the responses there, they deserve a, an accurate response. Because the response they were given was not accurate. And I think we can all read that and agree. I don't want to go down that path, but I think they deserve that. Like I said, it's been 140-something days since the, the meeting, the January 24th meeting, and we've noticed some new issues that's come out since then. Councilmember Jackson, this is one issue I will specific as an example, brought up in a meeting about rebar, sticking up in the backyard of 306 Fillmore. That was, I guess, a couple of months ago. I think we got through a meeting immediately, excuse me, immediately in that meeting, city staff went out, I believe it was one of our team members went out and put a cone up, handled the issue, communicated with the property owner. Then another meeting came and went, and I think we asked for another update on it at a, at a following meeting. And information was provided to the property owners, where accuracy was then brought into question. And I went to that property, I didn't see that rebar, or at least I didn't, it didn't register in my head, there's a lot. But you had saw it, and I'm thankful, and it was evidently there when, when I was there, and I believe that. And the way that I took that meeting was sort of, it was the first time I understood it and, and heard it, and I appreciated the quick, timely response. But our, but our team received it as if it was the first time. And I think what I learned after was that there was knowledge. That rebar was initiated and brought up by our team here at the city. We had full knowledge of that. And this is just an example of being forthcoming, and to work as a team, and to represent those values. And it- And it was as if they were, the first time they were hearing it, a meeting went, and then email communication went out after we brought it up. Has this got anywhere? The cone was still on it, it was not resolved. the citizens who received communication, I forward this correspondence to our city manager, were provided once again, information that did not make any sense and represent what I would say proficiency and competency. From a team member who was fully aware, because this issue on rebar was brought up by us, the city, to the citizen back in January. So when you had brought it up, and it could be off, it was early in the year, it was already brought up and they were fully aware. And while it's actually not even a significant issue, right, it's just rebar. That's an example of go down the line and this continues to happen. And so I don't know how a consultant can fix values. I don't think we can legislate that. I don't think we can code our way or procedure our way into that. And I'm tired on this issue. I think we all are ready to move on and see the improvements made. But when they, when citizens wait so long, by following work directly with city staff, and it's not always going to work, there's always going to be conflicts, there's always going to be citizens who I disagree with and support city staff. But in this case, it became a head scratcher to finally getting some traction, but the level it took. And so then six months in after the council got behind it, we're sort of looking maybe a couple more months. And my hope is that we can in July, try to wrap a bow around this and say, we learned a lot, this is what we need to do, take what our city manager has provided and pull together. My concerns with a consultant is that if they're, if we're paying a consultant, I have to be careful with how independent it is, especially if they are also providing services for code enforcement. So the same one who's going to give an independent, of course, they're going to want to, you expand their services and add on and use it. It has nothing to do with, if it doesn't have to be that way, it would be better. The company who does it could do an excellent job, I don't know. But I've said this to Todd, it would be very difficult to Todd and even us to be unbiased in an investigation. Because we are the city of Cape Canaveral, this is the administration. And so I think that this council should consider that as a concern for bringing in a consultant. And we use the word audit. I think that there are some different paths that we could consider as far as that goes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't think bringing in a consultant and that is a good idea, what is your idea to fix this?
On that specific, instead of a consultant? If the goal of the consultant, I was, to retain services and experience administrative consultant, to assess the city's code enforcement procedures, practices, and organizational structure for purposes of recommending best practices to improve the department's organizational structure, services, and internal controls.
I'm not asking the description of bringing in a consultant, I'm saying, what do you think is the proper way to fix this?
I'm defining what you're saying fix this is-
Well, apparently you don't think a consultant's a good idea, which I do, because it's an outsider that can see things that we may not, or the city may not. But I'm asking if we don't do something like that, what are you suggesting we do?
I think that those things under the org chart today should be led within our team. And they should have been in place. And that is the role of a director and managers and employees, is that that's, and I didn't say I was against it, I said I was concerned. However, outside, who we pay as an outside, there is targeted and focused audits through the state of Florida Audit General. That's as unbiased as you get that this council could decide on. I think when I logged into BSNA for the first time and got access, and I looked at some of these things, I didn't get to spend a lot of time in there. But specifically, and this is sort of what a consultant, or I guess, an audit would do. The item number eight in the Rocks in the Swale, May 24th case notes. So on May 7th, the city manager presented the findings. In that meeting, the question was brought, where did this come from? Said it was in the field notes. I held up my field notes and I said, I have the field notes from March, they were not in there. City manager explained today that sometime after it was put in. That night, I was told, Mr. Mayor, we'll show you right now if you want to see it, it's in there. I went in there, and I said this in the last meeting, first meeting it wasn't addressed, then it was brought up again, it still was not addressed. And then when I went to BSNA, the date that it was submitted was 5/9. The meeting was on 5/7. And so I was told that they were in there, they were submitted on 5/9, because I guess that's when they were added. But our city manager, from my understanding, has not been able to verify when that was uploaded into BSNA. Well, we do know how to verify that. What was uploaded, the date into BSNA? And that next level of, well, where did that document come from? And so is getting back to the computers. But when we asked for all files, I don't think we received all files. We received BSNA. And my question would be, if we did have a consultant, what are the filing storage systems today that the city code enforcement department uses? BSNA is one. They obviously have their hard drives in their computers where they can create documents. Laserfish, I guess, would be a place where they can save directly and store. And then there's a shared-
User shares, yeah.
What is that?
Employees are encouraged not to save things on the local hard drive because if computer crashes, you don't have access to that. So each employee has a share on the city server where they're directed to save their information so that they can be backed up. Those are the user shares.
So that's, so anything that exists should be saved there? Of course, it could be on a hard drive, but is there anything else other than the shared, it was like red folder or something that was said in one of our meetings?
Yeah, they, there was a historical practice to have printed documents, actually in a, you know, in a folder that was colored red. And stored in a file cabinet drawer in the employee's office.
But if I was a code enforcement officer and I said 116 Jackson Avenue, give me all the files on it, is there one place that that code enforcement officer could go and see all their files? Working documents, final documents, just sort of that organization of where they're stored and managed?
We already know that they save some things in BSNA, they save some things in the user shares, they save some things in the red folders, possibly also some things in Laserfish as well.
And red folders are physical?
Mm-hmm.
But those are printed after they're already saved. It can't live in the, correct me if I'm wrong-
Unless it's handwritten notes.
What was the role, why did we spend $300,000 on BSNA? What's that, because that's, we use tool, that's, I thought, was a tool. What was the, that used, the intent for that?
John, you were part of that purchase, you know what the intent was there stated?
Well, I'm just asking you, as you understand it, as our city manager, I think-
A tool for efficiency.
Right. And to communicate with residents, because it's public records.
There's a part of a public portal, yeah.
But there was no place that the residents could go and see all official documents?
They could see whatever documents were toggled on.
But that wasn't a complete and accurate storage to go 116 Jackson Avenue, where are all the official documents? There was no place that a resident could go and see.
And I don't, I don't think anybody was, in code enforcement, was directed to put all, until recently, all notice of violations, official records in BSNA. I don't think there was any direction given on that initially.
And so that's it, is that, do we need a consultant to give us direction for that? I don't think so right now. I think consultants could be very beneficial. Again, I'm not completely against it. But there's, the time this has taken on both Fillmore and Jackson within this department does range a concern. Today, I believe we've learned, two building officials have resigned. And we are using services over there. Talked about some practices here that are really verbal, which is just bad practice for me, I know, and for anyone. And it's, I think that-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Also of concern for me, as someone new, whereas a consultant might end up being able to look at these cases and take steps to repair or put recommended best practices in there. It's obvious to me, as someone new that just stepped in, you know, within the last, well, since November, that we have had problems with this, not just at these two group addresses. Because the very first thing that I got exposed to was Portside Villas, and their issue had gone on for two and a half years. So to me, as someone, if I, you know, I would think that we would want to look at anything that is out there and pending and has been pending for quite some time, to try to identify, or do we have other issues than, other issues in addition to what we're seeing here? Are some of these same ones, or, you know, are they procedure issues? And then address those back to the code. Simply because, I don't know if a consultant will come in and look at every single one of these. I have no idea what the price would be for that. But we definitely have a bunch of cases that we have been told in council as we've asked questions during these processes that are out there pending. And so I would look, you know, I would be interested in seeing, what do we have, how many do we have out there pending in BSNA? How long is the oldest pending code enforcement case? So that we can see, if we bring a consultant in to rectify this, if there are other issues on other cases that are not addressed, we're still not going to have this addressed. This could be a lot bigger than what we're just seeing here from lack of procedures.
And I think that the cases out there where you have a building that's not being maintained, that's not being initiated with any action, has sat there for two years at the risk of the public. And that's why at the time, it wasn't to get answers, it's, I think we found that there was no established practice. All these things that were going through, that to me is a, that's a function, not as a function higher in the org chart, to put it straight. And so you and I have spent a lot of time on this, that's a department, they did not get direction, is what you said. Councilmember Davis?
I see it totally opposite. I mean, I'm concerned about this too. There was mistakes made, that we can't deny, but nobody's perfect. I make mistakes, everybody on this council makes mistakes, everybody in the audience, I don't know anybody that doesn't. The thing that is important to me is that we don't go back and keep harping on these mistakes. We know what they were, or we know the majority of them, I'm not saying we know everything. And we correct them. We don't, you know, we understand, so we have to find a way to move forward, not go keep harping on all the bad stuff in the past. So if we sit there and we say, okay, that's why I'm asking, how did you want to correct it? Do you want city manager to correct it? Do you want Director Dickey to correct it? Who did you want to correct it? Because if you have an outside person, nobody on this bench, and I'm not saying we would, or anybody else, can say that person is biased, they haven't done anything, they've done this or what. So we have an outside thing. They don't know us from anybody. So they'll sit there and say so-and-so did this and that was wrong. We can have this outside consultant do anything we want. If we want them to look at other cases, we can have them look at other cases. I don't know what the limit is. But it doesn't mean he has to just focus on these two, we can have him do anything we want. That's something we have to find out and, you know, and look into. But I think the way to solve this, where nobody is accused of anything and everything gets solved in a proper manner, is to have an outside person, an outsider, that looks, has a whole different view than we do, than the public does, than staff does. And I think that's the only way we're going to get a proper solution.
Councilmember Willis?
Well, I'm concerned that if we start looking at every open case, which could be open for multitude of reasons. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be any of these types of reasons, it could be multitude of. But if we are going to go back and start looking at those to add into this, it's not going to solve this any quicker. It's just going to drag it out even more. So let's solve this. And by solving this, we solve other things as well.
And acknowledging Councilmember Willis's statement. However, the, one of the common themes I'm seeing here is we have no operating procedures. And so operating procedures will cast a net over all of these. And I really feel like we need to, we may not want to go in and analyze each one the way that we've done with this case. But we're obviously missing operating procedures that are coinciding with code and state statute. By doing so, we may have multitudes of ones sitting out there that are aging, that should be closed out, should have operating procedures applied to them so that they can be closed out. So where I agree we need to fix these, I don't think we can ignore this, because if there's no operating procedures, that's going to be out there with just about anything that we may have touched. Not going to make them all miraculously fix themselves. But I think we need those procedures to find, first and foremost, back to code and back to state statute. Because without the procedures, no one's going to follow them. It's just like in an employee handbook. You know, if you don't know what you're doing and you're not relating it to the different sections, you're not going to be able to conduct your job the way that you need to.
In my view, there's no better person than an outside person to work with staff to set up the standard procedures. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, but the outside consultant could help us and will help us set up these procedures, correct?
Yes, we can frame the request to be whatever we want it to be.
Yeah, so that would be an outsider, again, establishing procedures that they see from- from their point of view that were wrong, and working with our staff so that we can get a complete group, a set of procedures. So I still think... I don't want to sit up here and not get a consultant and then have anybody on this dais or public or staff, whatever, start accusing someone of not doing this and doing that, and, you know, it was their fault, it's their fault, it was, you know, it's mistakes I'd ever made. So we need, I just see an outside consultant.
And I think we have procedures, that's my point. It literally says code enforcement procedures, quoted earlier. Why, you can always, you know, further define, clarify, strengthen, make it better, but when I look at the procedures and I look at what's happened here and across, is that there's a big, there's a big problem here, and I do not know how a consultant is going to fix some of the information and the, and the lack of response that citizens have received and I have received regarding these issues, and frankly, at times, serious disrespect to the, to the, to the office. And my hope is in July, if you want to go through these after my in-depth, is that a consultant, sounds great, but not before we take who we have and walk down the procedures we have today. We have to be able to follow our own procedures today. And if we did not, and that's as much time as I'd spend, either we, like you said, Councilmember Davis, identify the problems, first thing is, do we agree on these being the problems and the roots? That's what I hope our response, and what I'll be prepared to work on and talk on, is that if we take our code and we apply it, we don't need another word. We have enough. And I think, well, if we have a code that was not, in my opinion, lacking clarity under life safety issues, and it, it's beyond this, and I don't need to look at other cases, we all have experienced cases and seen them throughout the years, and this issue has been longstanding, that the IPMC was going to resolve, a magistrate was going to resolve, and today we still have them, neither one of them has, has resolved these issues. And I've went through, meeting after meeting, trying to be patient, but at some point, it becomes, it's on us, it's on this council at this point. And I'd like to request in July, before the council meeting, I'd like to knock this out and not have this. Of course, city manager can bring it, whatever they want at any time for any meeting, but I don't want to go all the way to the, to the next regular meeting with this in front of us when we can double down. I've seen enough to know that we have enough, if we just walk and apply the steps and you look at it from that view, no, no practices, no procedures. Our city manager, I think, has the authority to see how to improve this without a consultant. And then if you want to move to a consultant to add, that's fine, but today, the, the information has been very difficult to rely on, and it's created this, you know, verify, verify, and to date, when, when somebody says that something's in there and it's not on multiple occasions, I have to question, and I was asked, I think, at one of the meetings, do you not trust us? Well, after three or four instances where the parties in these cases have provided a lot of evidence and shown us evidence, who've never given me any reason, but yet on our side, unfortunately, the answer is, yes, I have to verify this because of these instances that's happened, and I have a responsibility to do that, and this is not comfortable. I'm saying, after July, I hope to never talk about this again and we start working on implementing the solutions. But if this is going to be bringing a consultant two to three more months and work through, why can't we just say, here's our code? Here's our decision tree? Here's our org chart? Here's the cases? Did we follow these steps? If not, why? Let's figure out how to follow the steps we have today and earn that next step to make it better. But if, to me, is, we did not need a procedure when, when it says if it's a life safety issue, you don't even need to notice. That was a life safety issue, well documented with people going in and out. Why was it condemned by, or inhabitable by the building official? Because it was an inhabit, why? Open wires, electrical issues, that our city, we were, we had been in that building, our officers, they saw no violations. Unbelievable.
Can I?
And then they, yes, absolutely, and I'll wrap up. And then they come back, and then the person who called in the request gets a violation. Are you kidding me? Now, if that violation exists, I 100% agree with it, pursue it. Then that citizen reaches out to our city manager, attorney, all of us, and they get ignored. That's unacceptable. I am not going to say consultant, no. That's the problem, in my opinion, is why did that happen? So this changes within. No one's going to fix us and say, well, you should have went, here's nine more steps to clarify it, yes, that would be excellent. But there's, this has been, this has been haunting the city for a long time, and I think we've learned there, there were no practice procedures, well then what is the job descriptions of these people and who is responsible for putting these procedures into place? And why was there not, why was this not taken seriously? I've seen enough. I don't need to, to hear anything from a consultant to go, was that a life safety issue? Why did, why did our existing code not get applied? And I haven't heard a good answer on why our existing code, the word code is, it's practice, procedure, where's the code? Our job is to follow the code. That's not right. I've said enough, I could go on, and y'all all know that, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting tired of hearing myself talk about this.
Okay.
And I want to see this resolved so we can use our strengths as a council, as an administration, to go and make this city better. This can't loom over our heads anymore.
The way I see it, yes, mistakes have been made. Apparently, you know, we all have our view on what happened and what didn't happen and what mistakes were, the mistakes were. You know, you're sitting here and what I hear is that you are not happy that the code, the city procedures and all that were not followed, okay? So now you're saying they didn't, the staff didn't follow all these procedures and code enforcement officers didn't do what they were supposed to do, but I want them to set it all up so they can fix and get it right. I, then, that sets them up for just more, more complaining or about them, saying you didn't, you didn't correct it, correct, you know, right or whatever, when I think if we need to do it right, we need a consultant. And just because we have a consultant, we can go on our business, doesn't mean we have to talk about this every week, or, excuse me, every month, we can have a consultant and when they get done, we can have a report, whether it's four weeks, two months, whatever down the road. I am not, I'm, I'm just coming to the conclusion that maybe this council does not want to hear what the consultant may have to say. That's all that I, that I can see, other than that, I cannot see any other reason not to have a third person come in, help correct the problem, help stab, you know, do the procedures, make sure everybody understands and follows the codes, the floors, you know, the statutes, and make sure everything's set up. That way, it's not blamed on anyone here, it's the consultant that's putting it on, because I'm tired of putting the blame on whoever for this stuff. Everybody, it was a mistake, it happens. So, I mean, I'm, I just think we can move forward away from this, I hope it does get, you know, resolved, I hope we do get our procedures in gear, I hope everything will, we've learned from this. But I will not have us continue to sit there and put blame on everybody, and then we won't take the advice of a consultant that has an outside opinion. I, I have a problem with that, where I would think that you would want it, because you, everybody, I'm not saying you, I'm just, you know, I'm not pinpointing, that, you know, council seems to think that staff was, did all this stuff wrong, and then you want them to correct it on their own? Don't set them up like that. Find a consultant that can help them do it, and we can do it properly, and has experience in what we're doing. So I, you know, I'm, I'm not for, and I'll say it right now, I'm not for firing anybody. I just want to put that on the record, I am not for firing anybody, mistakes were made, unfortunately, and, you know, things suffered, and, but that's how policies and procedures are made, you make mistakes, you move forward, and you make policy and you make procedures so hopefully you don't make those same mistakes. I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not perfect, so I'm not going to sit up here and say that I am and blame everybody else for making mistakes when I make them myself. And as far as timely stuff, I mean, I agree, some of it took a little while and everything else, but we ask staff to do things for, for us, and we expect them to be done as soon as possible. When this dais, this people, excuse me, this council doesn't even do the same for them, doesn't, we don't get things in on time all the time, so I just think, I'm, I just think to avoid any more blaming, any more issues, do a third council, I mean, a consultant.
Mayor Tim?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just think, I don't think we're deciding on a outside consultant. I know, I think that... Are responsible for this. We'll do everything we can to resolve this. I, I, I'm not opposed to an outside consultant, but I like the idea of having a meeting before the other, the regular meeting, and just go through the code and go through our values and, and make sure we have it right, and then if we need a consultant, I, you know, it's not that I'm against it, but like you said, there, there are procedures in our code already that is, are we going to pay a consultant to tell us, you guys already have these procedures? What are you asking me for? You know? I just think if we, and I'm, I'm sure Peg and everyone else is tired of this, and it's taken a long time, but I think the responsibility for this comes back to the council, and if we do everything we can, I don't see where a meeting, that would just be this purpose for, to look at the code and compare it to what happened and, you know, just see what we can do, our input to the city manager, and, and move on from there. But it has to be resolved. You know, we have to give them an answer that, and they have to know that we have exhausted every angle, everything that we can to get it right, so that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Staff will have their own bias for whatever we ask them to do, we will have our own bias for whatever we're going to do, and this is a discussion item. So are we going to walk out of here and somebody's either going to try to schedule a, another meeting for a purpose? Is that, is that what's going to happen?
I, I would like to have this sort of like it was initiated by itself in January, what I'm saying is, is introduced in a conclusive special meeting, and to say, you know, if, if all these items are not complete, and maybe they should, that's, that's not something that, what I'm saying is, is what we do have has raised enough red flags that I don't need a consultant to tell me, your code says this. Whether they followed it or not is, is one thing, but if, if they didn't follow it, what did they follow? And if they did not, you know, if they did follow it?
Well, I understand your point, but, you know, I just want to raise this, if we, if we go that route and we have a special meeting before the next council meeting, and we're looking at this, and we still find, you know, we really should get somebody else in here to look at it, but we have now wasted another, not wasted per se, but we have extended the whole period of non-resolution if we don't arrive at that point. So we've just added another month to what this problem has been.
I have, or Jackson?
No, I think I have a spurs. Mayor Tim, I'm not sure if I quite understand, you're saying in the meeting, we should give our suggestions on the procedures, or how to?
No, I think we should go through the code. On moving forward.
Where I was going.
I don't understand, because we can read the code on our own without a special meeting, and if we have any suggestions, concerns, we can approach the city manager. I, I, I just, I don't see why there would be a special meeting.
Well, that's the only time we get to talk to each other, so that's why I would, you know, like to have a meeting.
Yes, agreed.
Hey, and I have a question for the city manager, just because I haven't really read any of the job descriptions and all that, but I would think that with the code enforcement officer, the ability to interpret code would be within the job description, is that correct?
I, I can't speak for what the job description says, I haven't read the current ones.
Yeah, I, I haven't either, so, but I think that we need to, I mean, truly, I just pulled up what we were talking about, and I mean, the procedures are in there, so I'm not as, I'm not as knowledgeable, so I just literally pulled it up. So I just was curious, if, if it's not in the job description, as we look at additional resources, I would highly recommend we add that in there because interpretation of code is important in that position.
I just want to throw in there, I can say, working as a deputy, there's civil law, you got to know criminal law, I mean, there's so many different things that you know, and sometimes there's different laws or codes or whatever that you're not familiar with, as familiar with, and you either don't know it or you interpret it different or whatever, so that's not that uncommon. Yes, it was a mistake, I'm not taking away that, but it's not that uncommon because there is so much to know.
Well, thank you, yes, I think a consultant telling us, like you said, Councilmember Davis, we can read the code, I agree, I don't need to, that, now, interpreting, we lean on our city, I do, at least I think we all have our, the resource and knowledge of our city attorney who can help, guide and provide his opinion and been doing this a long time, and our, that department, this is not, this is trained? And our, that department, this is not, this is trained. I think that experience is there. I mean, been here for, for a while and institutional knowledge and this, and so that code, for whatever reason, I think if, if we were to survey the, the community and say, please share your experience with code enforcement in the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. I don't want to do that, but I don't think it would, I think it would be just as valuable as a consultant. I'm not diminishing the value of a consultant, absolutely. But I really value our city attorney too. When I have technical questions, he helps, he understands and leans on the, the knowledge of, he doesn't know the circumstances that our code enforcement's in, but in this case, I think we've had enough time to study it and to know it. All I'm saying is, is before jumping to a consultant, the original ask, Philmore specifically said, if a city manager and city attorney present any findings or opportunities in a report to be distributed, and for whatever reason, it should have been the same. And I think our city manager said, well, you can change that or whatnot, but whatever. It sounds like they met either way and talked about it is, the code is what it is. And it, we would be foolish to go and try to improve it, to go try to create procedures when I'm, I'm questioning the, the nature of this and the circumstance and the multiple issues. This is an impatient, I've, we've never put a deadline on this. I, I've, I, I know that these things take time, but my confidence in the issues in that department being resolved has diminished over time. And I want to see, I think, taking what we have and, and making sure, before we bring a consultant in, you say, the code says this, we can read the code, this is what happened. To me, it's pretty clear that there's some issues. And perfection is a word that I think you've used, Councilmember Davis. That's not one of our values. Mission is for excellence and excellence comes, is not perfected.
I don't think I've ever used the word perfection. Not really used that, no.
Well, you said, everyone makes mistakes, I believe. And you said, we're not perfect, no one's perfect. That, that's what I was thinking and I, I agree with that. And I don't, we all, we all make them, but these are, these are beyond mistakes. And that's why I say, I've seen enough. And, but I deserve, I think, we deserve the opportunity to respond to these 10 items and to go through and to say, number one, provide a report showing all actions and correspondence. First, did we receive a report? Did it provide all actions? Did it provide all correspondence to these properties, 114, 116, 18, and 20, for this period of time? Did it include all records available, whether it from BSNA system or record storage method employed by the city's department? We asked for this. If we do not verify that we were provided this, I've had a hard time verifying that each one of these had been provided in full from the very beginning. They missed time period and then I, and then there was items that started coming up into the meeting and then I was told that, oh, that was because it was prior to 2022 and it was a 2023 record. And then it becomes a he said, she said, the other party provides evidence. And then that issue is happening in other areas of bad information. And I think, I think that the consultant is a step too far at this time, but I would be in favor of moving towards consultant. The council has the ability to request independent investigation. That's been requested of us by citizens on our code enforcement department, that we have been employed to say, I would like an independent investigation of this, of this. And talk about patience, we've never taken action on that. We, we brought this forward and we said, all right, can, can we make sense of it? Like I said, I agree, third-party consultant would be great, but, you know, when we're hiring them and things like that, we just want to make sure we choose, I think, a, a really good company that I think council should, should decide on, on, you know, who we would be interested in and, and work with city staff to, to go through that process. But the most unbiased would be an audit through the auditor general in the state of Florida. We want to look at this exact request because these questions can be triple verified when they get into the silos of information. There's information here, there, there's not one place, those are unofficial records, there are official records. And that's not, that, that's, to me, the consultant is going to say, well, you need one record-keeping system. We know that. You need to write, not, Todd is saying, our city manager is saying things that I agree with in these, in these recommendations, but we can do this. We can do this right now with the team in front of us here. Instead of bringing in this perspective, there's enough here to take action on. So, that's, that's where I hope we, we can, we can start to move, is trying to, to wrap this up. If you, if we could meet in July and, and sort of have this as a, as a meeting to where it's hopefully the, the end of this, and I, I know it'll take time to, to eventually resolve it, but this perpetual coming up at every meeting and talking about it and we get through an hour and a half on nine agenda items and then we spend the two hours on this, nobody wants to do this anymore. And, and I think we've got to take swift action and, and start implementing or taking the strides to fix what the problems are, but we have to agree on what the problems are. And while this may not have been stated, when I read this, I am not reading what I believe the root problems are. And in July, at a special meeting, I'm happy to write what I believe the root problems are, but I really don't want to do that. I don't. I want to say, well, we have this, let, let, let's get, let's get, let's get this done because we should not have administrative tasks. That's, that's, we're, we're policy. Anthony's told us that, we know that and, and I, our policy makes sense today. Can it be improved? Always. Where was that remotely compared? I mean, just like where was, here's the all actions BSNA, here's what our policy is. I felt like I've said this multiple times, put the practices in, put the policy, put them side by side, go miss that one, miss that one. Okay, whatever. When we go through those exercises, I think it's, we have enough information to see that this problem is, I think, going to stay in front of us much longer and take us further than we want to go. And then it becomes deteriorating to things that it should not. So, and those are internal, those issues are still not resolved today. So, our values, our code, I'm requesting a deadline. If we want to continue to go longer, we can, but I hope that we can go into the July meeting, regular meeting with this sort of in the, in the rearview with a plan and that's going to move forward. And if that's a consultant, Councilmember Davis, sure, we'll do it. But I think, like you said, Mayor Protim, that wasn't tonight. My hope was to share, as we started heading down, the recommendations, the, the problems around following policy, laws, procedures, and/or the lack of, is all a function of the department. From, we're a small city and I think that there's, these things, we, we should be excited about simply following, I think, what we have and going, you can't follow this, it doesn't work, right? Like, and, and I haven't heard that, right? If you apply this, that, that's when we get involved. Okay, we got to fix this. But the whole conversation kind of got away from that and it, and it went down these credibility and things of trust and this evidence was presented. And I think Todd, our city manager, compiled facts, he collected evidence, he is, gave his, his best judgment of, you know, what this party said, what that party said, and if there's the third story, as our city manager have said, I think we are the third story. We are the third part, is that we've heard the city's position on it, we've heard the private side, the property owner's side. July, I'm ready to take this up and go through all five and, and, and agree to the recommendations, agree to the problems, further define the problems, but if I myself go in off on a new item or that in more time, and, and I, and I don't think that's helping anybody at this point. And I know the property owners are beyond ready to, to move forward. And unfortunately, I, I have, I have lost my ability to blindly trust or just, when I trust in, when I verify, I, I keep running into, to issues too frequently when I verify. That's simple as I can put it. This item is a discussion item. We do not have to take any action tonight. My request is that we find a date. If we want to leave that up to our, and decide that in between now and, and the next week, our city clerk might be able to help and city manager to help coordinate that as they've done in the past. The procedure, I think, is very helpful. So, we're not looking at our calendars tonight, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a report.
Anything else on this and then we can go to reports?
We don't have clear consensus, Mayor.
What do you need?
Is there consensus to have a meeting in July? And what preparation can I do for that meeting?
I say no.
Well, we're already meeting in July. Was the intent to bring this at the regular council meeting?
Continue to bring it forward until asked to take it off.
When do you foresee this, I guess, being resolved? How many more meetings would you?
My recommendation is that we hire the consultant, as I said. So, the process of getting that person on board, it all depends on him purchasing policy. If we're fortunate enough that we can find another contract to piggyback off of that has similar services. If we can't, then we would have to write an RFP specifically for these services. Two very different scenarios, one's shorter and one's longer. We don't know until we ask what's out there.
Okay.
But, but the SOP document, we're already doing that.
Good.
The only, the only question really is about the consultant aspect of it. And the whole idea of putting the consultant into it is to keep it as impartial, as third-party as possible, just to show that it's, it's as pure and accountable and, as we can possibly make it. But we certainly don't have to go that route. If there's, and if council wants to go another route and we can make the recommendations on the organizational structure and obviously we're going to move forward with the, the standard operating procedures document and that, whatever the consultant would do, you know, we could do that. Then there's also the other piece about the, the code enforcement officer, having that person on, on board also would still have to be answered as well. So, if we want to have another meeting in July, just need consensus on that and then what I can do to provide assistance for that. What additional information can I bring for that? Just so I'm clear on what my marching orders are.
I would say that you have fulfilled to the best of your ability a lot of these items already. What I'm saying is, is continue to move forward on those items and if you need direction on what to move forward with, on resolving the Philmore issues, resolving the Jackson Avenue issues, I think we certainly can get involved.
No.
But it, to me, would be more about taking what you've already provided and giving you and our team some feedback on what we want to do because, well, a consultant, yeah, I think that, that's it. It's, to me, the most, the logical next step is we've, January 27th, we pushed out the document. Since then, we've been receiving responses, fulfilling it. We, and we've been kind of giving, you know, live feedback as we get it. And we're now getting to that findings and recommendations, which on the code enforcement side, I think was sort of the end. I mean, that is, that's item number five, so it's, it's our time. I would say if, if confirm that in that meeting that all five are, is ready to go, that we're, we are looking at the status column and the supporting documents, the best and most accurate documents that you, you would say, and I'm looking to say, it is complete. I think that's, that's it.
So, we just need to be clear then if we're having the meeting then with consensus.
I would like to have a meeting and before the regular meeting in July. Councilmember Davis would not like to.
Maybe I missed a long line somewhere, but the report of findings for Philmore, are we going to get a report on, you know, how, how that happened and, you know, we lost a building official and an assistant building official? What happened there and why they got in occupancy and when they shouldn't have?
That, that was in the report of findings, but what's not been delivered is item five for Philmore. That's, that's, like this is for code enforcement, there's that still to come forward for Philmore.
Will that be in the July meeting?
Well, we are still evolving that. I mean, there's, there's codes in place that, and there are employee issues too, codes that weren't followed, employee issues, but as you noted, employees are no longer with I'm, I'm ready to turn my attention towards finishing that item, but obviously the, actually getting the work done on Philmore is between private individuals, is that weekly update you get every week about that. And I know that we're trying to work with them and continuing to push, push them to resolve that and where are we keeping, keeping the hammer down, you know, pushing, where are we? And, you know, we're, we're still waiting to get that finalized and I, I don't know what. And I don't know what else we can do to quicken that private issue. But that, largely outside of our control, whatever recommendations we make, recommendations document, the city attorney and I can work on, yeah, I can turn my attention to that now if we're ready to put this one to bed. But, Mayor, I did record, record consensus. I thought, saw three at least that want to have a July meeting. If I understand it, it's basically to just kind of take over where we stopped tonight and say, "How do we want to proceed?"
Well, yes, I think, in a perfect world, you would be able to finish item number five on Fillmore Avenue. I think it, but if you, if you're not, what I'm saying is, is you did finish that on the Jackson side, and we can, we can move in that direction, but at some point, I think, we have to draw the line in time, right? Like, it's, whether it's done or not, it's, we've given all I think we can afford to give as far as adding it on meetings and moving it forward and stressing everyone out.
Okay.
It's, it's not enjoyable by anyone, but as long as the property owners are in, in the circumstance they are, you know, I'm not going to put it to the side. And I think their confidence in the path forward is going to be a big indicator of whether or not I think we've got a good decision, but, yep.
Mayor, we have a reserved date for council already of July 2nd. That's the date we want to have this. That is only two weeks from today. I am concerned about having that fifth document for Fillmore done in that short a time. That gives me one week to get it out.
Well, I don't, I mean, I, I think we received the findings and stuff the day before. I mean, and I under, I would rather wait and it be done right than, and I know the one week definitely applies for regular city council meetings, but special city council meetings, even if it was similar to that, to where, you know, use the full two weeks to get what you could done, assuming that that would be okay and allowed. Then we could do it again. That just doubled the time, but it's still, I understand, two weeks by itself is, is near. Yeah, I think.
July 9th wouldn't be available?
I don't know if there's anything else on July 9th.
Yeah, I think this would be, the council agenda is released on the 9th, so that's the week before. I think if we can email and confirm some dates, but just the will to try in July before the meeting.
So we'll work to schedule that meeting for probably the week before the regular council meeting. So the, the regular council meeting is on the 16th. That's true.
But doesn't, I know we're sticking with the Tuesdays, because that was the reserved, but as city clerk said, that Tuesday is, I mean, it could be, I assume, there's a little exhale on the 10th, or? And I am trying to protect that July meeting to be a regular council meeting where we don't have to address this issue, where we separate it and have a, so, why don't we, we look at our calendars and try to find a date, settle a date? If we can't do it, we can't do it, but I do feel strongly about the standalone.
Mayor, what if the standalone date dealt only with Jackson? Because we, we can't expect the contractor to have finished everything at Fillmore by then anyways. I mean, Fillmore's not going to be resolved by then, as far as the work in the field that has to be done. So there, there could be a compromise perhaps there if we just made the special meeting only on the code enforcement.
Well, none of the tasks, though, ask for, I don't think, to be resolved.
No, the, the final step on?
Of course, we want it resolved. We hope that these efforts end up resulting in it being resolved, but on Fillmore, item one, I believe, is, been provided.
Yeah.
Two, is, and it's really just number five?
Number five and number four.
Yeah, and as far as the, the whole, there's updates. I'd really, I think, I'd like to take them together and at least deem three of the five as, as complete, right? To give you closure on that?
Yeah.
And to leave four and five open. And I just, I don't understand that, we're not able to get in touch with that contractor?
Oh, no, we are. We are.
Because I think the reports were saying that reached out to contractor and was not getting anywhere, I thought, the last one.
That's definitely the feeling I get from it, but I'm sure there was a response from the contractor. I don't, maybe Dave would recall what the response was.
I think my concern is, is this contractor is building a couple streets down the road, and I just kept seeing, reached out, did not hear back, reached not, didn't hear back, reached not, on an issue. And there are, you know, a few streets down the road, building another cookie cutter project, almost the exact, very similar. That, that is, that's all we're waiting on. I think we got to figure out a way to, to connect with him, anything, or the parties, the company, whoever's involved. But I'm not so sure that we, I guess, why do we need the contractor?
If we're okay with moving forward without number four being completed in July, I can make my very best attempt to have number five done.
Utilizing the report next to the chicken complaints. Okay, so, yeah. Actually, you're saying number four is asking for it to be resolved?
Yes.
Yeah, good point. I understand. Yes, I, I think that's, that's understandable.
Okay, so at the special meeting, I'll do my very best to present the deliverable requested in item five for Fillmore. And I would consider, at this point, my work done on the Jackson, and council will discuss how they want to proceed with that.
Exactly. So this is a time for us to go in and study and ask questions and work and make sure we got it, come back and just go down the line and get this put behind.
Yes.
This part of it, and as our city manager said, you know, the real world fixing the issues, the citizens are still there, their lives aren't being changed, business owners, we can resolve them then, or over time, implement the improvements, whether it be a consultant, whether, no matter what it is. But we've heard recommendations. I shared some initial thoughts on that today. My mind could change, and it has in the past, maybe it does, but I look forward to talking through it with everyone, so.
Okay, so all that's left is the date?
Can we, I don't think we, it's hard for me to do that, because, because I'll commit to something and end up overlooking, but if we want to give it a shot, we can.
Okay, well, we'll.
The 6th, or the 10th? Mayor Pro Tim said the 9th. City clerk said, good point. That was.
The 10th or the 11th, I know that that's when I start having my, my council member meetings for the next week, so we got to balance that as well. But the 10th or 11th might be the best candidates, I think, we have. So, Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'll go ahead and reach out to the council and suggest those, and council can get back with us through that method that we've been using recently.
That sounds good.
Okay, so is that consensus clear? Okay, thank you.
We're at 10 o'clock. If we want to do reports, we will need a motion to extend.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to just make light of one thing on the July council meeting.
Let us extend, and then you can have the floor.
Oh.
One second.
Oh, okay.
And we need a motion to extend.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion when you extend.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilmember Jackson. The clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Against.
John?
Oh, my apologies, Mayor. I thought you were ending the meeting, that's why I said that. No, just I want to bring light, the July council meeting has two major things that could be kind of time consuming, the budget and the city manager's evaluation. That's all I want to say. Make it conscious of that.
Agreed.
Okay, yeah.
Reports?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'm sure, I think most of you got an email from the Lega Cities, if not from the city clerk, that you do not have to do a Form 6. There was an injunction form, but your Form 1 is due July 1st.
Thank you.
There's a correction that July, that Form 1's due July 15th.
Oh, they changed.
They extended that to the 15th, because they could not get the portal readjusted for Form 1, so.
The Lega Cities, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, or Willis, any reports, Councilman?
Yeah, last month, I attended the Central Florida Safety Strategic Planning Meeting and was a panelist for FDOT on safety with five other District 5 people. And I discovered that Cape Canaveral takes safety far more serious than other communities, between the sheriff's department and city staff, and their response to the public. It's way above the other people who represented on that board. So I was very proud of the city and the things that we've done. Also attended the Disaster 101 for senior officials, and that was very informative. And if they ever do that again, I would suggest it for any council members, because they dealt with FDEP and FEMA and how to go about navigating that. And they also handed, gave out some checklists or quick reference sheets for public officials, and I'll hand everybody one, on how we can help and how we can not get in the way. So it was, it was very informative. And I also graduated from Florida Lega Cities advocacy course, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. So that was, that was informative as well, so we can do a lot more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
I completed the Florida Lega Cities IMEA course for elected officials. So I went to, down south and took that. That was interesting. I also went through a symposium with the state Florida Department of Emergency Management for disasters and some of the credible threats in today's world. I have some materials that I would like to share with council. I'm also, I discussed with Zach that I wanted to share with him as well. One of it, one of the courses that I took that was really helpful was continuity of government. And I did get our loss mitigation plan from Lexi. So I'm going through simultaneously to identify any gaps that we may have, so that staff is aware of it, and also trying to identify anything new from Florida State for emergency management planning. So it was very interesting, a lot of information, and it was, it was a very interesting conference to be at. So I'm looking forward to sharing that. I'll have some manuals for everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, yes, I attended community outreach of Capeview Elementary at the rec center, and they talked about their, losing their funding for Title I and the things that they need. They are getting some extra money from Brevard County for certain things, but, you know, the affordable housing problem in our city and is really going to affect that school. You know, working people can't afford those apartments that Rocky was talking about, which really affects Capeview Elementary. So, but they are looking for mentors to come to the city, or to the school and speak to the children and be part of their lunch, have lunch with the kids and things like that. But in the future, we really need to think about how we can keep Capeview open. So it was very interesting. And as, as far as VFW is, is doing a Christmas in July benefit for Capeview, where we bring in food supplies, school supplies and other things they need. But it was a very interesting outreach. That's it.
You. The city manager?
Coffee with the city manager this Friday at 10:00 at Manity Sanctuary Park.
Thank you, and thank you for continuing to do that. Have you ever missed one?
I think we didn't do one in, after Christmas.
That's remarkable. Yep, thank you for that. Consistent, I know that's not easy. City attorney? City clerk, anything? Fine, you're good. Commander Cuck, any reports from precinct, anything we should know?
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. I have one report, well, two. Cocoa Beach High School graduation this year. I had a calendar and a communication mix-up. Take responsibility for this. I've went to that the last two years. It is by far one of the coolest things to have the opportunity to do and to see those kids. And I wasn't able to make it this year. And so I should have sooner notified another council member, but unfortunately, we were all in a council meeting that night. And so my hope is that next year, I catch that, we can catch that. That's such an important date, and I really, really regret that. But I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to apologize. Those are Capeview graduates taking life to that milestone. It's such a huge event, and, you know, council meetings are so important, but if you can, you could figure out a way to make that work. There's only one night to graduate, and should have at least, if I couldn't have made it, Mayor Pro Tim, I know, or any other council members could have been able to support and be there. And so that's that. But most importantly, congratulations to the graduates. Capeview and Cocoa Beach, heading off, wishing them the absolute best. And the last thing is a big thanks to city staff and all who are involved to get the state of the city out. Thank you for your patience with me, and very proud of it. It looks awesome. And social media, all those things look really good, and I know that that is not easy. And so hats off for getting that out. And so for those of you who are listening in or watching this meeting afterwards, go check out the state of the city. There's a lot of cool accomplishments that we've been able to do as a council and as a team here at the city. And that's it. So with that, if there's no other reports, let's do a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, and right there, Anthony, I can end it, right?
Yep.
Meeting adjourned. You told me that. You told me that. Thank you.